Evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. During the public health crisis, we will be conducting our meetings remotely and they will be available on the city's Facebook page, as well as broadcast on the Community Media Center channel. We'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag followed by a moment of silence. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Cards of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website for those interested in following along. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of the meeting of the mayor and council of April 27, 2020. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
There's a motion by Ms. Gilbert. May I have a second?
Second.
There's been a second from Mr. DeHaas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Before we begin the regular meeting or the rest of the meeting, I'd like to announce that several members of the council having requested additional time to review the line item version of the budget that they've just received in the last few days. It would probably not going to be able to conclude our discussion tonight. So accordingly, we will be scheduling a special meeting of the mayor and council for next Monday evening, May 18th at 7:00 PM. And I ask the city clerk to make the appropriate public notice of that meeting. Tonight, we have three presentations on the agenda. And Mr. Mayor, I believe to start us off, you have a proclamation.
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Let me get started on that here. So we have a proclamation tonight recognizing National Public Works Week. I think it's very fitting. I know that our public works and the county's public works staff are working really hard amidst everything going on. They have a lot more to do than they did before the pandemic broke out. So I'm going to go ahead and get started here. Whereas public work services provided in the city of Westminster are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives. And the services provided, the Westminster Public Works Department staff include utility maintenance, snow plowing, water treatment and distribution, sewage treatment, street repairs, facility maintenance and repair of the city equipment. The health, safety, comfort and quality of life, the city of Westminster community greatly depends on these services. And the quality and effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design and implementation, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the city's public works employees. And whereas the mayor and common council wish to publicly salute the service and contributions of the employees of the Westminster Public Works Department. Now therefore, I, Joe Dominic, mayor of the city of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, do hereby proclaim May 17th through the 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week in the city of Westminster. And be it further proclaimed that all residents are encouraged to join the mayor and county council in commemorating the observance by thanking the members of the Public Works Department, past and present, for their dedicated service to the city of Westminster and for their efforts to maintain and enhance the quality of life in the Westminster community, adopted this 11th day of May, 2020. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council joins you in supporting that proclamation. Next, we'll hear from the city's outside auditors with their report on the city's financial performance during fiscal year 2019. We have with us Ms. Wanda Lynn and Ms. Ashley Hershey of Brown Schultz, Sheridan and Fritz. Ms. Lynn, would you like to start us off?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. We're pleased to conclude and go over these audit results with you. Next. She's going to flip the slides for us. There we go. All right. So before we dig into the numbers, we're going to just want to do a high level communication of areas that were required to communicate with you. We did previously provide you with a letter that outlined these things in more specifics. But the audit responsibilities in the engagement letter that is signed annually, it outlines what your responsibilities are versus what the auditor's responsibilities are. And then also in your financial statements themselves, the significant accounting policies are disclosed in Note 1. So that would be, you know, what the city, how they recognize, how you recognize all of your assets, liabilities, revenue and expenses and so forth. We also provided you with a copy of all the journal entries that we proposed and that your management approved. They're included in your financial statements. And we also did identify some uncorrected misstatements that we accumulated and we track those by fund and we make sure that your financial statements are not materially misstated and we are comfortable that they are not. And again, that's, those schedules have already been provided as well. We did not have any issues or difficulties in the audit. And then later on in the presentation, we will go over some communication of material weaknesses and other recommendations that we have. As far as the audit opinion itself, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive. It does include an other matters paragraph, since we did have proposed prior period adjustments. And again, we'll get into that in more detail later. Next.
Oh, one minute. I'm sorry. It's not clicking. There it goes.
Okay. Also, just want to make sure that you're aware that your financial statements do include sensitive accounting estimates. For instance, you, your management makes an analysis of the collectability of the taxes and other receivables, the depreciation on capital assets as far as the life, the accrued compensated absences being split between what you expect to pay out in the next year versus longer than that. And then the largest area would be your net pension and total other post-employment benefits. Lots of estimates go into those calculations. And then also your unbilled water and sewer services. And then as far as your accounting disclosures in the full financial statement package, there are lots of new disclosures in there. And so you can use that as a resource to look at all of, for instance, your debt information, the pensions, and also the prior period adjustment, just to name a few. Next. This year, the government was required to implement three new accounting standards. The first one, GASB 83, the certain asset retirement obligations actually had no effect to your statements. GASB 88 is the certain disclosures related to debt, including debt direct borrowings and direct placement. The only impact that had on your statements this year related to the 1.3 million loan that you have with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the Fiber Fund. And really what that GASB does is it just was required to disclose more information than you would have had to previously. So there's more detail in your note disclosures about that. GASB 89, accounting for interest costs incurred before the end of a construction period. Historically, interest from debt finance projects such as the E&amp;R project would be capitalized as part of the asset cost. But starting this year, that is no longer allowed and the interest is expensed as it's incurred. Next slide. The GASB is very active. So the next, this slide is just showing you that you have four additional standards that will be coming up in the future. The second one there, the leases, that will need to be evaluated to see basically if you currently, you do currently have some operating leases. So any lease that you're currently expensing that's over a year period, you would need to transition and potentially record that on your statement of financial position as an asset and a liability instead of just expensing it, treating it more in line with the capital asset. And then the last one there, just in case it grabs your attention, the conduit debt obligations. That is a new GASB, but you are already disclosing your conduit debt obligations. There is some inconsistency out there as far as municipalities. So really you're already doing what they're going to be asking of you. So don't expect change there. Next. All right. Just want to tell you that the audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. In addition to that, we also audited compliance of a major federal program in accordance with Uniform Guidance. So that was, your major program was the Section 8 Housing Voucher Program. That represented 2.3 million of federal funds, which is roughly 99% of all federal funds that you received in that fiscal year. So our responsibility for the audit is to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And we do that by test, on a test basis examination of evidence supporting amounts and disclosures, assessing principles utilized in management's significant estimates and evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. Ashley's going to jump in now and go over some of the high level numbers that were on your financial statements.
Next slide. So as Wanda said, I'm going to go over these figures at a very high level, but of course, if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So this slide is showing the government-wide statement of net position, otherwise known as the balance sheet. And it's for the city as a whole and it is on the full accrual method of accounting. So you'll see three different columns, the first column being governmental activities. And this is made up of the general fund, the Public Housing Agency Fund, as well as the Capital Projects Fund. The next column is business type activities and that is made up of Water Fund, Sewer Fund and Fiber Fund. And then the last column being the total citywide figure. So the first line is current assets. So for governmental activities, that totaled about 19.1 million. Business type activities was about 30.7 million and the total city was nearly $50 million. Just to give you an idea, about 42 million of that relates to cash. And then another about 5 million relates to receivables primarily related to taxes, grants, et cetera. Next line, next capital assets. That is commonly referred to property plant equipment on the for-profit side. For governmental activities, about 51 million. Business type, about 81. And total citywide net of 132 million. Non-current assets are relatively minimal overall. So for the total line of total assets and deferred outflows, government governmental activities, about 73.1 million. Business type, 112 million. And total citywide, 185 million dollars. Next line is current liabilities. So for governmental activities, it's about 3.8 million dollars. Business type came to about 6.3 and for the total city, it was about 10.1 million. And the majority of that line item is made up of accounts payable and other accrued expenses. And then for non-current liabilities and deferred inflows, governmental activities was about 19.2 million. Business type, 28.5 million. And total city, nearly 48 million dollars. And within that line item, about 29 million of it relates to bonds and other debt. And then 17.5 relates to pension, OPEB of that nature. I did want to point out that there was some new debt issue during the year. About 29 million was issued related to the E&amp;R project on the sewer fund. However, only about 1.7 million of that was actually issued at June 30th. And then the Fiber Fund, now that the project was completed, refinanced their debt and that was about 16.5 million. So total net position for governmental activities was about 50 million. Business type was 77.7 million. And total city overall, about 128 million dollars. Next slide. So this slide outlines the governmental fund operating results. And it's important to point out that this is on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So things like debt service are principal and interest payments instead of being run through the balance sheet. And then capital outlays are also expensed here instead of being capitalized as and depreciated as we're going to see a little bit later. So two columns here, general fund, which is made up of the general fund and the Capital Projects Fund and then the Public Housing Agency Fund. So starting with the general fund, about 13 million relates to tax revenues, obviously the largest line item. And then another 2 million related to grants and revenues from other governments. And then other revenues, which are made up of fines, licenses of permits, et cetera. About 2.4 million, bringing total revenues for the general fund at about 17.6 million. Operating governmental expenses at about 12.5 million. Debt service, which like I said, includes principal and interest payments, 1.5 million. Capital outlays, 2.7 million. And I did want to point out that capital outlays is a line item that can vary greatly year to year. This year was actually about a $5 million decrease from last year. About 3.5 million of that relates to the paving project difference. And then another 1.6 relates to last year or FY18 purchase of 45 West Mean Street. So you can see how that varies significantly. Bring total expenses for the general fund at 16.8 million. Some other small items there, bring the total change in fund balance for the general fund at 743,000. Public Housing Agency Fund, this is where the federal fund is presented that Wanda mentioned. So about 2.3 million dollars all received from HUD. And that is not wholly, but most of which is paid out for the program. So you'll see operating expenses, another 2.3 million. So total change in fund balance related to that fund at about $56,000. Next slide. So this slide is the operating results for the proprietary funds. And differing from the slide we just looked at, these funds are on the full accrual basis. So the largest item you'll notice a difference is the treatment of capital assets and debt payments. So again, three columns, water, sewer, water and fiber funds. So first line, operating revenues, obviously the largest line item for each fund as you would expect. The next line is intergovernmental revenues. And for sewer fund, that was 4.4 million dollars this year. And that related to the E&amp;R project and that was new for this year. So that was a very significant item. Other revenues consists of interest, rents, et cetera. So total revenue for sewer fund was 11.2 million, water 5.6 million and fiber fund 569,000. And then you can see operating expenses for each fund, depreciation expenses for each fund, as well as interest expense on debt, bringing total expenses for the sewer fund at 5.5 million. Water fund, 4.8 million. And then fiber fund, 1.4 million. The next line is capital contributions, the bulk of which relates to benefit assessment charges, bringing down to our total change in net position for each fund. Sewer fund, very healthy at 6.3 million, water 1.2 million and fiber actually had a loss of 834,000. I do think it's important to mention though, that the fiber network was not completed until the very end of the fiscal year. And therefore that is not a full year of operating revenues. So we do expect that to increase in future years. Next slide. So this slide is just a visual to show you the cash balances as of June 30th for the previous three years for each fund. And it's important to point out that this is just at a point in time. Cash balances vary greatly throughout the year. So this is just a point in time, but you can see they remain fairly consistent over the past several years. Next slide. This slide outlines graphically how revenue is split for the governmental funds. So you can see by far, the largest piece is tax revenues. And that's made up primarily of income and real estate tax revenues. But there are some, also some other miscellaneous tax items in there, followed by intergovernmental revenues, charges for services, licenses and permits, et cetera. Next slide. This slide outlines the revenue breakdown visually for proprietary funds. So you can see for FY19, the largest fund revenue wise was the sewer fund. A lot of that relates to the E&amp;R project funding, followed by Water Fund as expected, and then fiber. Next slide. So this slide further breaks down the detail of the revenue items for the proprietary funds. So as expected, you can see that for each fund, by far the largest item is charges for services as we would expect. But again, for sewer fund, you can see just how significant the intergovernmental fund revenue or the intergovernmental revenue was related to the E&amp;R project for the sewer fund at 4.4 million dollars. Next slide. This slide just outlines the expenses by governmental function. And we just thought it was an interesting graphic depiction of that. So you can see public safety is the largest item at 6.5 million. And I'm sorry, you can't see the aqua one. That's a community development and public housing. Again, capital outlay, 2.7 million. Like I said, that can vary greatly from year to year. And then the next item would be public works. Next slide. So this slide just graphically presents the proprietary fund, the significance of expenses of each of those funds. So as expected, sewer fund has the largest expenses followed by water and then fiber. Next.
All right. So at the conclusion of the audit, we evaluate everything that we identified during the audit. And there are different categories in which we communicate to management and council. And so just wanted to provide you with some definitions. Material weakness in internal control is defined as a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting or compliance such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements or material non-compliance with a type of compliance requirement or of a federal program will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. And then a significant deficiency in internal control is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting or compliance with a type of compliance requirement of a federal program that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. And you did have a couple findings that we, that are in each of those categories. Next slide, please. So as far as the material weaknesses that we identified, the first category, there were two prior period adjustments that were necessary. And by default, the standards say that if you have a prior period adjustment, that's considered a material weakness. The first one, after discussing with management, we decided to remove local reserve allocation that was recorded as a receivable. It did not meet the criteria for recognition. We also talked with the state and the numbers that were recorded as a receivable were a very high level estimate based on income received by the state. But they have never received tax returns and they also do not know for sure, you know, how it's going to be allocated between the different municipalities. And so that receivable was removed. And then the next one was a correction of deferred outflows of resources for the change in proportionate share of the city's net pension liability that were incorrectly expensed during the year ended June 30, 2018. Pensions are a very complicated area and there are four different components of pension deferrals that get amortized. And this is just one of those pieces that get amortized and for some reason that was all expensed in 18. So we had to pick that back up. The next comment, there were many adjustments to the city's account balances that were required through the journal entries that we identified and they impacted many different categories. So examples were adjustments included cash and equity restrictions, interest income accruals, account receivable, inventory, capital assets, accounts payable, retainage payable and housing revenues. So since there were just so many different areas, we considered that to be a material weakness. As far as capital assets, Tammy identified this as a problem before we even started the audit. And then as we were digging in, we determined additional challenges in this area. And so this particular area actually ended up taking several months to reconcile and get this in a place where you can be at a good point moving forward. So some of the things that we identified were, there were significant reconciliations were necessary between the fiscal year 2018 financial statements, the city's fixed asset system and the city's general ledger system. And I'm saying 2018, but really some of the issues that were identified were years older than that. But in just the Water Fund alone, there was a 1.5 million adjustment that needed to be made. It was correctly reported on your financial statements previously, but not in the fixed asset system. So the modules were not communicating properly and had not been reconciled to identify that issue previously. Also, there were assets sold in fiscal year 18 that were not disposed on the city's books until 2019. And also there were several assets included in construction progress at June 30, 18 that were actually for jobs that were completed and should have been put in service as of June 30, 18. Then there was a project that was completed as of June 30, 19, that was not placed in service. And then finally, there was a number of assets with a date in service of June 30, 19 that were placed in service earlier in fiscal year 19, causing depreciation expense to be understated. Now, the last point was more of a factor of so many assets needed to be added, trying to save time to get it in the system and be able to move forward. However, back to my previous comment, we have to make sure that your financial statements are not materially misstated. And so we had to look at that by fund. And so for the Water Fund, we actually ended up having to change some of the dates of the in-service because it wouldn't fit on the uncorrected differences list. Next slide, please. And so the, these two comments are a step down. They were considered significant deficiencies. The first related to the fiber inventory. There were some errors in the spreadsheet that was used to value the inventory. And then also just wanted to remind you that the inventory is, you know, a high value item and consider reconciling, excuse me, observing that more than once a year possibly to ensure that you're capturing the correct inventory and you're not having any theft. The next comment related to certain employees had control of funds held by the Community Foundation of Carroll County and could choose which expenses and deposits will be run through that, those accounts and basically bypass the city's controls. And then also, an employee was paid from this fund to avoid reaching the number of hours that would require to avoid reaching the number of hours that would require them to participate in the pension plan. Excuse me. Next slide, please. The finding specifically related to the housing voucher program, there was one for material weakness, and that was the monthly voucher management system. The VMS reports were filed with inaccurate balances and were not corrected timely. Those reports have since been corrected. And then there were two significant deficiencies. The first administrative costs were charged to the public housing agency using allocations that were not documented, were not consistent, and were not reviewed. So we're just recommending that you come up with policies for how those costs should be allocated and support for that. And then finally, the depository agreement was out of date, and public housing agency funds were not held in an interest-bearing account. That comment has also been completely resolved. Next slide, please. And then these final two comments, these are not considered material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. They're just suggestions for improvement. So part of the audit is to look at your budget. And part of that, we identified budget transfers as well as a few budget of revenue and expense items were not correctly inputted into the accounting system based on the approved budget resolution from council. And then additionally, the public housing agency fund revenue was left was left off the revenue detail listing when the budget resolution, but was included in the general fund revenues totals. So basically, it was just approved all in general fund, whereas it is a separate fund. And then the last comment, the city currently processes credit card payments through a square account maintained by the city. This method seems to leave the opportunity for a volunteer to change the log in for the iPad or the square account and process the credit card charges elsewhere. The square is not as secure as some other methods that you could use. And also, especially since you have a lot of volunteers that are working those events. So that's a very high level review for you. We are available to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much to both of you. That was a very good presentation. Of course, we've all received copies of the documents and had the chance to review them. We'll we'll take some questions for Ms. Lynn and Ms. Hershey in a moment. I just wanted to start off by saying, as we look at the material weaknesses and as you discuss them with the staff, have is there been any discussion with you already of corrections that have taken place since then? Or is that still something that, you know, needs to be dealt with for the future?
They did prepare a corrective action plan to the statements. A couple of them involve training. We have discussed the need for it. However, it has not taken place at this time. And I have not followed up on some of the comments, so I really can't say if they have changed anything or not.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the auditors who'd like to be heard? Anybody? All right. Hearing no questions, we'll say thank you very much for a very thorough report. It was a pleasure having you as our auditors. I know nobody ever liked being audited, but, you know, we like to have, you know, very thorough report and take these opportunities to correct these kinds of problems. Overall, you know, I think you said at the outset that overall it is a very good audit report and that we're pleased about that. Certainly, you know, we do have a few more mistakes that we'd like to see in this error, in this report, and we'll certainly be working with our staff to fix those. So with that, thank you very much, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda.
Mr. President.
Oh, yes, Ms. Gilbert.
Yeah, I just have a question, and I don't know if this is exactly where it should go. But considering there were eight findings, I'm wondering whether it's possible that we get a report of some of the action items and that they were corrected and maybe the status or the corrective action that has been taken, and it could come back to council at a later date.
Mr. President.
Yes, thank you. I neglected to mention that. It was my intention to schedule that for an upcoming meeting. But Mr. Mayor, did you have a comment you were trying to make?
Yeah, so we did. We did get a report with those with those findings and the actions that were taken. I know that we've been getting a lot of between the budget set, you know, the budget sessions and all the different communication, we've been getting a lot of emails. So I'll try to find that and resend it over to you. And but I will, I do, I do think we should probably have a discussion about them, whether that's in the finance committee or as a entire mayor and council. But we did receive that from, I believe, Ms. Matthew sent that to us within the last couple of weeks.
Okay, I was I was kind of referring to the notes that the auditors kind of left, such as maybe the training or some of the other recommendations. I just want to make sure those corrective actions will be taken and not and taken in a timely manner.
Mr. President.
Sure.
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Palmer.
To answer Ms. Gilbert's question, the corrective action plan is found in the financial reports on pages 120 through 123. Everything in the corrective action plan will be corrected by June 30 of 2020. I believe that currently, the only thing that hasn't been corrected is the training that Ms. Lynn mentioned. That is regarding the pension liabilities and the schedules related to those.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. So I would like to take the time, because I think it's important for the entire council to be satisfied. So I think that, you know, I thought because we've got a lot on our agenda tonight, that we'll we'll go through these in some detail at one of our June meetings, if that's agreeable to everybody. All right. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda for presentations is on the Westminster Fiber Network project. Tonight, we'll receive our quarterly update on the fiber network project. And for the city portion, we'll hear from Ms. Barbara Matthews, our city administrator, and then for the Ting update from Ms. Valgiavagnioni. So we'll start with Ms. Matthews. Ms. Matthews, can you can you hear us?
Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, included in your agenda packet is the customary staff memo that outlines financial information. Two items that I wanted to call to your attention. One is while this is report is for the quarter ended March 31st, we did include information through the end of April regarding our debt service because I thought that might be of interest to you. As noted, as of April 30 of 2020, we had made principal payments of $315,000 and interest payments of roughly $548,000. This was on the $16.2 million bond that we refunded just at the end of the last fiscal year. So I just wanted to kind of tie that those debt service payments into some of the discussions during the FY 2021 budget process. I also wanted to call to your attention the decrease in past premises from the report for the quarter ended December 31, 2019. As noted in the staff memo for tonight's presentation, the number of past premises decreased by 128 from the last report we gave you. Our deputy public works director, John Dick, removed the addresses in question based on his determination that these addresses were in private areas that were not serviceable by the city and therefore should not be counted as past premises. The decrease in past premises kind of has two practical outcomes. One is it does reduce our fiber fund revenues, not only for this quarter, but on ongoing basis until such time as Mr. Dick determines that those addresses are serviceable. From a mathematical standpoint, when you have a lower number of premises and your subscribers stay the same or go up, it also serves to increase the take rate. So I did just want to call those two items to your attention. If you have any specific questions about the reduction in past premises, Mr. Dick would be the best person to answer that, and he is on your call this evening. Before we turn it over to our Ting partner, I also wanted to see if Mr. Dick had any comments he'd like to share about construction activities during the past quarter.
Mr. Dick, are you? You will unmute?
There we go. We're unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, John.
Okay. So I really don't have a whole much to add to it as far as the, you know, I'm sure there's some questions about reducing the the past premises. And, you know, that goes back to being private property. We had no fiber built in that area to begin with. The address is we're already on the address list we were using from the beginning, and this has been fluctuating over time. Once again, this came to light that this Timber Ridge area was the biggest hit there. It was included in the passes when we have nothing built there to service it. So that that should hopefully clear that part of it up. As far as the construction, everything else has been going good. We did put in one enterprise line out at CLB for them that we had that up and running. The maintenance team's still working on building out Stonegate, builds out, and that's going up pretty smooth. We're putting every part of the fiber in from back boom fiber, clear down to house connections out there now as they build it out. Rather than that, that's really all I have to comment on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dick. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Matthews or Mr. Dick on the city portion of the report? All right. If not, we'll move on to the Ting report. Ms. Giavagnioni, thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, hello. Thank you for having me. Let me make sure I can successfully share my screen here. I'm going to see yourself for a minute real quick while I toggle here. And we will present. Can everybody see my screen?
You can. I can.
Well, good. I'm so glad. Thank you as always, Mr. Mayor and councilors. It's a pleasure to chat with you again tonight about our quarterly progress here in Westminster. I did look at the budget work session a couple of weeks ago regarding the fiber fund. And I'm hoping that I provided in my presentation some information to address some of your thoughts and concerns regarding customer acquisition on your Westminster Fiber Network. So here we go, a review of January, February, and March of 2020. My agenda for this presentation remains similar to presentations of the past. The difference tonight is I will talk just a bit about some things going on currently relative to our COVID-19 situation. So let's take a look at the past quarter's customer acquisition. We did, of course, see growth during our first, your third quarter. We saw excellent numbers during January and February. We can credit that to the overflow of the holiday promo. You'll remember I spoke about in January, we made the a donation to Carroll County Food Sunday for every customer who onboarded with that promo code, and it was very successful. In addition, we had a wildly successful Valentine's Day promo, which I will speak about shortly. Unfortunately, since we stopped installations mid-March, in order to keep our field operations team safe, we didn't see quite the growth we expected that month. I'd like to point out that phase three is very close to that 20% milestone. And phase four is certainly chugging along. I was about to send out a phase four exclusive promo right before the COVID crisis began. And for obvious reasons, that was paused. All things considered, it was a successful quarter for Westminster. So now we can take a deeper dive into the marketing efforts during the last quarter. We decided to do a bit of research to learn more about our customers' reasons for turning to Ting in order to apply that learning to future marketing efforts. So in January, we surveyed our customers who signed up with us during the months of November and December of 2019. We wanted to better understand their reasons for choosing Ting and assess their awareness of our advertising. A quick survey was sent late January to those who fit the requirements. Those who responded were given a credit for one month of free service. We saw a 55% return rate from the decision makers in the households, and most of the participants were residential customers. The first snapshot of results I want to share with you is regarding the reason the customer had not yet switched to Ting. 41% of the respondents reported that their reason was that it was not available in their area. However, I find it important to note that even the last addresses to be live on the network in Area H of Phase Four had turned over about seven months prior, and many had been online for multiple years. The second bit of results I want to share with you is regarding our advertising. Two thirds of the respondents were able to recall seeing our advertisements in the past few months, with flyer and direct mail and online advertising having the highest recall. The survey most certainly led us to some conclusions that I think give us both, being the city of Westminster and Ting, something to think about. We together need to make sure we spread the message that Ting Internet Service is available citywide. We must ensure that residents and business owners alike in the city of Westminster know that construction is complete and they're ready to get lit. While these new customers did mostly see our advertising and that likely helped, we need to do more to reach more people. I think a good next step is for the city and Ting to come up with a plan for working together to spread the message in new ways in order to reach more people. I'd like to see our fiber meeting group come together and address this as an agenda topic. Here is one example of our marketing from last quarter. We continued with our testimonials campaign in the Carroll County Times. You'll recognize Jason Stanbaugh, who shares, "I've had almost two years with no internet, with no internet issues, and my bill hasn't changed since day one." He's a gigabit customer both at home and at the office, and is truly an advocate for the Westminster Fiber Network and Ting. I think you'll also notice Andy Lucchini, a residential customer, who says, "Before Ting, my service was horrific, always laden with issues with service that went out for days at a time, and reaching customer service for assistance was impossible." Of course, thanks to the Westminster Fiber Network being a brand new, well-protected network that uses the latest technologies, Ting Internet Service will absolutely feel superior to the telephone and copper networks that have been aging in the ground and on poles for decades. We were about to send three more testimonials with familiar faces to the papers, but we paused them. At the same time, we paused installs, and you'll see them coming to Carroll County Times later in May and June. Win-back initiatives. As I've talked about for the past two presentations, we are really diving deep into successfully winning back an address that is already on the network. That is typically a customer who has canceled because they moved. Getting the word to new the new resident surely has its challenges. The main tactic I have gone with is educating real estate agents on the benefits of fiber to a home buyer. I've worked with the Carroll County Realtor Association generally, and thanks to an intro to an experienced Realtor in town by Councilman Yingling, I've brainstormed and have plans to socialize with agents on how to show that fiber is available in an MLS listing for a house for sale in the city of Westminster. This goal is a national priority for all Ting towns this quarter, and I hope to have progress to share at our next presentation. As most of the council is customers, some of you in multiple locations, you've seen and hopefully remember our welcome kits. We've given them an upgrade to make them more socially responsible. One of the pieces, which I love and can't wait to get my hands on, is a stainless steel travel mug to replace the ceramic coffee mug. This mug has the graphic on the screen etched in it and is super attractive. I think that they're going to be a hit. So this is the Valentine's Day promo I mentioned earlier. It was quite rich in the offer, offering a free installation, a service credit, and an offer to pay early termination fees with their other provider. We highlighted the reason that people should break up with their current service provider and say, "I do" to Ting. I believe that the fact that we don't hold people into contracts or have hidden fees, we offer unlimited data, we have an honest pricing guarantee, and answer the phone when you are called are just some of the reasons people should follow them up with Ting. And it worked. This was a successful promo, and we surpassed our budgeted new subscriber goal with that promo by 40%. So COVID-19 related. As I've mentioned several times in the presentation, we had to pause installs in March. But instead, we decided to contribute as best as we could to the community. We made donations to Together We made donations to Together We Own It and Carroll County Food Sunday to help feed those who are impacted by the pandemic. We set up Ting Park and Wi-Fi in the downtown farmer's market lot so that anyone who doesn't have a good connection at home could count on better internet service in their car. And then finally, we purchased gift cards from our Main Street customers, which you can see in the presentation there, our Molly's Cafe, The Food Chick, Bertie's Cafe, and Jeannie Bird Baking Company that we've been giving away on Facebook for some feel-good. Okay, the good news is now that we've resumed fiber installations, so I want to share with you some information about that. As of Friday, April 24th, we were back to doing installs. We call this our Smart Install. It is a safe way to bring access to people in need. It is a contactless, technician-led install that counts on the customer to do some of the work. The picture on the screen is what the install looks like when done. I must say, I'm super proud to share that our maker, technology specialist here in our Ting Maker Space Westminster, John Jopsey, designed that wall plate. With a cover that is removable, the wall plate covers the hole in the wall and also has mounting pegs for the modem to hang on. He is fabricating them currently in his basement on several 3D printers and distributing them to all of our markets. Okay, so we're hiring. One of the fabulous Field Ops team members that many of you have known, Nathan, saw an opportunity and decided to move to North Carolina to be a part of our Wake Forest team. So we're hiring a Field Ops technician. If you know anyone who is interested in this position, you can tell them to go to twocows.com/careers and for more information and to apply. And now some information on our TV progress. COVID-19 has had an impact on our TV project. Fortunately, as many of our Westminster customers well know, there are great TV solutions available now, including Sling and YouTube TV. The TV industry can be added to the list of things that COVID-19 is impacting. We are taking a look to see just how this impacts our project. And with that, I am at the end of my prepared presentation, and I would be happy to take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Giavignoni. And let me just say, for those who might be watching and are unfamiliar with this, that the reason we do this presentation is because it's, the city of Westminster built the fiber network, but we needed a partner to light it for us and to provide the, the internet service, the gigabit speed internet service over it and some of the, some of the things that go with that. And so when the city launched the fiber network, they partnered with Ting to, to provide that service. And so since that began, we've gotten a quarterly update on, as the progress has progressed, both the build-out of the progress from city staff as we were building the network and also from Ting as they were marketing the service and providing services under the contract. And of course, we're all, because we do have a partnership, it's in our interest as well as theirs for this to succeed. So we're always very interested in how, you know, how the kind of progress they're making. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Giavignoni?
Hi, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Hello, Ms. Giavignoni. How are you?
I'm wonderful, Mr. Mayor. How are you doing this evening?
Well, thank you. So I have a pretty simple question, and it's gonna be hard to answer, because I guess we have to kind of look back at the beginning of the quarter. I know the last time we spoke, we, we talked about some of the phases being a little harder to increase market share because they were, you know, largely businesses and so forth. And I know that over the past couple of months, you know, you weren't doing installs, and I'm sure it got even harder to sell in the businesses. But before all this started to happen, like back in January, were we seeing any progress there?
Were we seeing any progress in businesses that, that's what you're asking?
Penetration into the business markets. I know that, I know it's a little harder to kind of sell in there, especially with like a broader type of marketing that you guys do. But I just wanted to see if you'd made any noticeable progress in that, at least the beginning of the quarter.
So we have a business sales team who has largely taken over that. You know, I, I hear about their successes and surely I see the installs coming through on the calendar. You know, I don't have exact numbers ready for you right now. We've just seen two businesses place orders today. I mean, they, they continue to come in. And I think more than ever, more than any other product, businesses really rely on that word of mouth and hearing from another business, the success that they've had in the, in the transfer over to the fiber connection. So, you know, we, we do try and spread that word. I do try to connect businesses that reach out to me with questions to other businesses like them to hear, you know, hear what the success has been like as they use our product. So yeah, I mean, we continue to grow. I just can't really quote for you exactly right now what that, you know, percentage looks like.
Understood. And, you know, the reason I ask, and I'm sure we'll have many more conversations about this is, you know, I am proposing that the city spend some marketing dollars in promoting the network. And largely, that's been responsibility of Ting. And I think for the long-term, that's where it should lie. But I do think, you know, marketing for a year or two as a city, largely based in awareness, not necessarily the same way that you guys market, but awareness of what's available where and, and how it could, you know, how it can affect your, you know, the activities you, you might do at home or at your business, and just largely an awareness branding campaign. You know, and I think knowing, you know, where you guys are strong, where you guys may have some struggles will help us do so. So we'll have more conversations about that. But I do want to do more, you know, with our partnership. Because obviously, take rates, the higher they are, the, the better it is for, for everybody, not just you, but for us. I know the, for those of you watching that don't know how the contracts set up, it's largely, you know, it's, it's based on how many people get service for, for everyone, for us and for Ting. They don't play, pay us a fat, flat rate. They pay us a rate based on how many people have service. So we're, you know, this is a partnership. We're in this together. And, you know, I, I do think we can do a little bit more as a city to promote it. And, you know, I'm gonna be working on that if the, of course, if the council votes, votes for funding in the budget. And I, I think we're all on board with that. So, but that's it, Mr. President. That's all I have for Ms. Giavignoni.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would anyone else like to be heard or ask any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Maybe, maybe the mayor could answer this question. A lot of times when I talk with business owners about Ting, they're caught up in long-term contracts, and I don't know how you get around that. But that's, that's one of the impediments that I have come across in the past.
Well, that isn't, it's a, it's a real impediment. So, you know, there, there's a contract and some, some providers enforce it, some don't. But most do on the business side of things. And, and, you know, contracts are gonna be anywhere from a year to three years typically with that kind of stuff, depending on the kind of circuit. And look, in all fairness to those contracts, I do, I do really like the way that Ting does business and they don't have contracts. I think most consumers really, really appreciate that. And, and, you know, but, but some of those providers do have large upfront costs delivering, especially some of these older circuits, the ones, the ones that they probably have when they, they're really, really, really do want fiber. And, you know, sometimes there are hundreds or thousands of dollars it costs to install some of those, and that, that's what justifies some of those contracts. So, but, you know, here's the good news. They, they last between a year and three years. So at the one and a half year, you know, year mark of being somewhere, you, you, half the people, at least more than half the people, don't have those contracts to worry about at least sometime in that period. So that's not a long-term problem. And I do think that we, we did talk about this in one of the other, maybe the last Ting presentation, that, you know, we were trying to figure out where you guys got a little bit of a surge from. And I think part of it, we, you know, we expressed that it was because of some holiday promos. But also, we looked at certain phases and then coming up on that, like that two-year mark where you see a lot of cable providers have their, their contracts that are up and so forth. You know, I mean, when, when, you know, when Ting was available in my neighborhood, I was under a contract of Comcast, and I waited for it to be up before I switched over. So, but I, I switched over, and I think a lot of people in my neighborhood, which is a new neighborhood, so a lot of people were under their initial contracts that I talked to switched over when they, when they had that. That's a, that's a, that's a hurdle, but it's not a forever hurdle. It's, it's another one. It's one that people have to be educated about to know when their contracts are up, if it's going to renew. And then, you know, I mean, there are things, now that you have a business sales team working on it, they can keep a spreadsheet of when, when those contracts are up. And you know when to call people, maybe 60 days ahead of time. So there, you know, there are things you can do and address. It's a good, it's good to know the problem exists, but it's not a problem that, it's not a long-term problem.
Well, and if I may add, we do actually help pay with early termination fees. So we try to tell people not to let that be a barrier to be in touch because we have both a residential and a business program to help pay your way out of a contract.
Mr. President.
Her answer was better than mine.
Thank you. Mr. Dayhoff, did you have something else?
Yeah, and now would be a good time to come up with a good marketing program because I think I said it at the last meeting. I've talked with a number of folks that, as a result of the COVID crisis, a, a lot of folks have talked to me about having Ting provided outside the city limits, or I've encouraged folks to move inside the city for Ting because they've had various challenges with their internet since they have been sheltered in place, they've been working at home. And Mr. President, if I, if I may ask, I, I'd like to study the report. If we could, if we could include this in the minutes by reference, that would be wonderful. And I wonder, would it be possible if we could have a PDF of this report in, in the packet in the future? Would that be okay?
Can, can we do that, Ms. Giavignoni?
Oh, you're just relying on a procrastinator to be done a little earlier. I was literally finishing my slides 15 minutes beforehand. So shall you want such, I will do the best I can to be done ahead of time.
No, I, I understand just-in-time management. I understand that really well. Maybe, maybe.
It's not in the packet, perhaps afterwards.
Okay.
No, for sure. I will be sending them to Ms. Posowski for your distribution. Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. So that concludes, I learned more, more questions. That will conclude the Ting update. We'll now move on to the report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things today, and I, I won't comment too much on things that I think other people are gonna talk about. The first thing I'd like to mention, and I won't say a lot because I know Councilman Dayhoff knew him probably better than any of us, is we did lose one of our officers. Lieutenant Johnson had passed away. And I know, I know Councilman Dayhoff will say that, but I'd like to at least mention that. And it's unfortunate in times like these where, where we could go to a service just a few months ago. We, we can't, we can't do that today for a lot of people. So I thought I'd mention that today. A couple of issues that I think that we can get ahead of here as a city. And I did bring this up in an email to everybody, but I think, I think we need to start thinking about it and discussing it. There are definitely some hurdles that we have to, we have to address if we can make it work. And maybe we can't at the end of the day, but I think we owe it to the restaurants in the city to try. And, and, you know, and I, I had this discussion with a bunch of, all the, all the mayors in Carroll County. We have a, we've had a weekly call, weekly Zoom call. After I brought it up, it sounds like a couple of council members had already been having parallel conversations about it. So I'm not trying to take credit for the idea. I got it from a couple of their mayors, and it sounds like we already had it in the works here. But I think that we need to add some flexibility for when the time comes for restaurants to open, they're likely gonna open up at a percent, a percentage-based capacity, whether that's 25%, 50%. That's, that's gonna be set by the state. And then, and then we're gonna, we're gonna have to do our best to help them work with that and enforce that. But I think one of the things we can do is, if, if ahead of time, we can, we can figure out a way to give restaurants and bars a little more flexibility on how they can have, create some, some additional outside seating. And look, there's gonna be some, some restaurants and bars that can't do that. But there're gonna be some that can. And as long as it doesn't affect our water, the safety of the setup, the ADA compliance of the setup in a way that we can't handle, I think we should offer as much flexibility as we can if they, if they can add some seating outside. Because likely what's gonna happen is these restaurants are gonna open up at 50% capacity, and that might be just enough for them to make enough money to, to actually open and, and operate. And if we can give them any kind of flexibility on that. And in some cities even do that already as, as, have, have some, some more flexibility in that in, in their, their day-to-day before COVID-19 hit. So I think anything we can do to help local small businesses, we should. So we should start that discussion. Maybe we have an economic development, you know, economic committee meeting. I don't know who else that would fall under. I think we should talk about that and see what we can do with, with our planning department and then with our police chiefs so we can talk about safety issues too. Obviously, we don't want to do this at the expense of, of safety. And we need to make, make sure that people can, can get by on, you know, get, get by on our, on our sidewalks. If, you know, if certain people in wheelchairs, they can't, they can't walk around tables. So we have to do this in the right way, but if we can add any flexibility, I think we should. We should start that conversation. And anybody else who, who, who had that idea before I did and talked to the mayor, feel free to take credit later. I take no credit for that idea. So I also wanted to start a discussion. I had a discussion with Councilman Kivachi at least a month ago, if not longer, after he had talked to one of the principals of one of the high schools here about how to recognize graduating seniors in, in the city. City residents are graduating seniors. And, and I think the idea at the time, when we knew a whole lot less about the virus, was sometime during the summer, when we can get back to having parades, we would have a parade where all the, all the seniors from, you know, the high schools in and around the city could, could have a parade and kind of walk down and do something before, you know, a lot of those kids head off to college. And maybe that could still happen, but I, I think I get the feeling, Ms. would get the feeling we're not gonna be having parades this summer, and that'll be dictated again by the state, not by us. But I do think that we should have an alternative plan. And I think if we can still do that in the future, we should. But in the meantime, even if it's something as small as putting up some banners, having, having something, maybe read off a list of all the graduating seniors, we need to do something to, to recognize the seniors. I look back at, at, at my, you know, my adolescence and in my childhood, and I think like 90% of the fond memories that I have, I feel like came from my senior year in high school. And a lot of them, you know, they come from things like graduation, prom, senior week, things like that, that, that these kids are, they're just not gonna have. So there was anything we can do, you know, to recognize the, the graduating seniors, I think we should. And, you know, maybe we put that under a committee, maybe, maybe we have a discussion at a meeting like this. But I think whatever we do, we should do it soon, and we should start that discussion. I wanted to plant that seed, and Councilman Kivachi can take credit for the original idea. This idea will be far less exciting, but it might be what we have to settle for. We should do something though. And then the last thing I'd like to comment on, and I, I, I don't know if I've ever really commented during a council meeting on decisions that our commissioners have made, and this isn't a criticism in any way. I want to be clear about that. I think they had a decision to make, and I think the, the reasoning on both sides of it was, of a sound. But I, I do, I do think that the original idea was a good one. Commissioner, you know, the, the president of the commissioners over there, the board, Commissioner Wance, sent an idea to the mayors, all the mayors of Carroll County, asking us if we're okay with this. And there's a liquor license that restaurants and liquor stores have to pay. And it's a $1,500 fee every year. And they were looking for a way to help those that were affected most. Now, the idea was they weren't gonna waive it for liquor stores because liquor stores are doing very well right now. But they did, he, he did want to waive it for restaurants that had, you know, that served alcohol and liquor licenses and that were struggling. And even though $1,500 isn't a lot in the grand scheme of things for a restaurant, anything we can do to help, we should help. When brought up with the other commissioners, they had, they had a valid argument against it, which was it was cherry picking between different kinds of businesses and restaurants that did not have a liquor license would not receive that benefit, which is a good point. But, but the counterpoint I would have is having a tax on certain businesses and not others is already cherry picking. So when you, when you, you know, we don't want to cherry pick in one direction and not in the other. I think, I think that it's a good plan. I think that they should reconsider. But I did want to let the council know that it wasn't gonna be our decision, that was going to be theirs. And there's a, we get 25% of that revenue. The hit to us would have been like $12,000, and it would've been one time, one year. It's not something that would've been multiple years. I, I did tell them that while I did not have the entire council support, that since we're not making a decision, it wasn't a decision we made, that you had my support and I would bring it up to the council. So I'm, I'm doing that today, and we would, you know, it would've been less than a $12,000 hit because that included the, the liquor stores that would not have gotten the subsidy. So I want to let you know that, that I'm, I'm still going to push for that to happen. And hopefully, I get the council's support on that. I don't think anybody out there doesn't want to help the, you know, the struggling restaurants that are, that are out there right now. So that concludes my much longer-than-normal mayor report. So I know they're usually short, but there's a couple of things I wanted to talk about. And that concludes it, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on now to a new feature on the agenda, just to update the council and anyone listening on what's happening in the city under our response to the COVID-19 crisis. Ms. Matthews, I believe you had something you'd like to share under that?
Yes, thank you, President Pecoraro. As the mayor and common council are probably aware, last Wednesday, May 6th, the governor- issued a directive basically loosening up restrictions on certain recreational activities. Just wanted to note that prior to the city being able to do so, we will be required to consult with the health officer for Carroll County, Ed Singer. And Mr. Singer has requested that each jurisdiction in Carroll County provide him with a copy of their plan to maintain social distancing and other requirements. Have consulted with our various city departments and wanted to get your feedback as we work to finalize a plan to submit to Mr. Singer later this week, so kind of outline what our recommendations are, and then I'd appreciate getting your feedback. Staff is recommending that we keep our playgrounds and park pavilions closed as they are now. Our thinking is that these are very high-touch areas. It would be very difficult for city staff to properly sanitize the surfaces. And in our opinion, social distancing is inevitably going to be a problem. I think as the mayor and common council have probably seen, just going around the city, our street department staff back in March already invested considerable time to install measures to restrict access to our playgrounds and park pavilions for health reasons. And my concern is if we remove those barriers, we may find ourselves in very short order having to reinstall them. We are also recommending that we open up our tennis courts, our basketball courts, and the skate park, provided that there is signage that would be posted at each of these facilities stating that the number of users at any one time must be less than 10. In talking to Chief Ledwell, he believes that he and his staff will be able to monitor these facilities to see if people are being respectful of the social distancing guidelines. And obviously, if we find that that is a problem, we would then reclose those facilities as warranted. In making these recommendations, I did want to note that just shortly before the meeting, I was part of an email exchange in which Mr. Singer was a participant. Part of that email exchange did include guidelines that have been issued by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for their properties. And in those guidelines, DNR cited concerns about their ability to maintain social distancing in high-contact sports such as basketball. Ed Singer did weigh into that email exchange and made a comment to the effect that he did not believe that social distancing could probably be maintained appropriately in high-contact sports such as basketball. I did want to call that to your attention because it is possible that if the city includes in its plan opening up basketball courts, that that may not be approved by Mr. Singer in his capacity as the health officer. So, with that, I guess I just wanted to kind of get your feedback. We would like to start working on putting together a plan that we could submit to the health department for their review and consideration. From a practical standpoint, it would take the street department a day, once we get that feedback from the health department, to make the necessary signage for installation at these locations.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Who would like to be heard on this? I think I heard Mr. Cavaci.
Mr. Mayor, were you first?
Who knows? There's a delay, and I don't know. I don't need to be first. It was one of the log.
I guess my, I'll be brief. My comment would be on the basketball. First of all, I think it's great, Ms. Matthews. I agree with your recommendation overall. I think tennis is fine. I know we had at least one citizen reach out specifically to ask us about that, and I think that would make sense. I do agree, the playground's probably going to be tough right now. And the skate park, you know, I hope that the users will be respectful of the 10-person limit. Fortunately, it's almost directly across the street from the police department, so that certainly is going to make it a little easier for them to keep an eye on it. But in terms of basketball, what I would proffer to Mr. Singer is, as you may know, my house backs up to East Middle. So, there are three or four basketball courts right in my backyard. It is typical for individuals to go out there either one at a time, or sometimes there'll be one or two of them where they're working out with a basketball individually. Sometimes there might be more than one, but they're not playing with each other. There's individuals that do that every day virtually and throughout the weekends while they're not actually playing games, there is no contact. They're using that as physical exercise, and it's a good workout to do that. And you can also play some games in a basketball court where you don't, you can socially distance, for instance, horse, which is, I think, a game we're all probably pretty familiar with. So, I don't see any reason why we can't open these basketball courts up and put a sign in basically saying that, you know, "Look, you can't play games, but you can use the court for exercise." So, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for that input.
Mr. President?
Sorry, the mayor wanted to be heard, and we'll let him, we'll go to him next. Mayor?
Excuse me, Councilman Yingling. It'll be one more minute. So, yeah, I agree, I agree, I think, with Councilman Cavaci for the most part. I think, you know, tennis courts, pickleball courts, most of our parks, it's a no-brainer. Like, you know, people need to get outside, they need to exercise, they need to breathe fresh air. We should do everything we can to make that happen. I'm a little uneasy with basketball courts, and I'm a little, you know, and then there's playground equipment, which I do think is probably over the line right now just because of the amount of climbing and touching and whatever, you know, whatever else kids are doing on those, drooling on the, I know, you know, my toddler gets drool everywhere. So, I think we need to be extra safe with the basketball courts. I mean, the playground equipment, the basketball courts are definitely the thing I was on the fence about. I think my biggest concern there is, look, I think if you watch the basketball courts and you observe, you would see a lot of people following the rules. You'd see some people that don't. But, you know, you see basketball hoops in people's yards with neighborhoods, kids playing there now too. So, I think I err on the side of opening them up. The one concern I have, and I think everyone needs to keep in mind while we make these decisions, is not just what's best for the health and safety of everyone in walking that line, but also considering the enforcement, the cost of time. So, any of these decisions, and I was talking about this one earlier with Ms. Matthews and, you know, Chief Ledwell, is I'd like, I really want to heavily weigh Chief Ledwell's opinion on these things because our police are the ones that are enforcing the rules that we set, and I want to make sure we don't cause some sort of issue where a ton of time is spent enforcing these kinds of things and, you know, because, you know, there's state mandates now that we have to enforce. So, if, you know, I think a conversation I had there is, we post some signs, we're clear on what those guidelines are, and then we see how it goes. I think we should open up the basketball courts, you know, along with the other more open type of activities. But I wanted to give people some of the discussions that we had earlier about this so that you knew some of what some of my concerns were.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yingling?
So, I actually tend to disagree with the mayor and Councilman Jivachi about the basketball courts, although their points are definitely well-taken. I think that you open the basketball courts, you're going to have people gather there. They are going to be playing, and it's going to create an enforcement issue as the mayor's point. So, I don't want to have, you know, and again, we can talk to Chief Ledwell, you know, his guys having to go there, you know, every single day and disperse people playing, you know, basketball, not social distancing. So, I'm kind of on that we don't open the basketball courts, but that's just my opinion, and that's all. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yingling. Would anyone else like to be heard on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
I think I would like for the council to take a look at the plan before it's released to the public so that we can take a look at it. Maybe just release it to Wreckin' Parks if that's better. But I would really like to take a look at it and know what's being released to the public so that when I get questions about it, I have some idea as to what's been released. And then I want to echo the remarks about making sure that we consult with the police chief about this because in my watching of the news, there's been a number of problems in other jurisdictions of having COVID-19 regulations that were essentially unenforceable.
I thank you, Mr. Dayhoff.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of follow up on everyone else's comment and agree that we should probably consult with our chief. And also, I agree with the idea of keeping our playgrounds closed, at least until the weather is much warmer than it currently is, as I think many of you have realized, or the reports state that a lot of the virus doesn't possibly live as long on light and with the heat. And we can always determine that much later as the summer progresses. So, you know, we can always revisit that with the playgrounds later. But I'm, I live right in back of a basketball. I kind of agree with Councilman Cavaci to a degree. What I did see is parents and kids and family units playing amongst themselves, more so than a group of people coming together. I would like to see maybe a comprehensive, or at least somewhat of a plan. I hate to just dump this onto the police for them to police the issue because it will be difficult. And I'd hate to go back and remove the basketball nets once they're hooked back up again. I guess there's two sides on that one.
There are, but you know what? At the end of the day, the Carroll County Health Department's going to tell us whether that can happen. So, it's not really up to us, you know. I think, and you know what? Here's the thing, the state and the county are setting those guidelines. We don't have to sit here, we don't have to debate in our head because there's so many things where, you know, you can debate and be on the fence about. But, you know, it's up to us to work within those guidelines, but they're going to tell us what we can and can't do for the most part.
I'd say, once Mr. Singer allows that to happen, I wouldn't see the problem with it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Can we just try and, just try and take turns and avoid talking over each other here?
Sorry.
Dayhoff, were you seeking recognition again?
Yes. From what I know about Mr. Singer, he's not going to be a shrinking violet as to volunteering his opinion on our plan. But I still want reassurances from the president that we'll get to see a copy of this before it's released to the public and have an opportunity to comment on it. We know our community, we know what will work and what won't work, and I think it'd be important that we have that opportunity.
Well, how does it sound? Can we, Ms. Matthews, can we get a copy of this distributed to the council, then perhaps we could put it on the agenda for a little further discussion at the special meeting next Monday night? That ought to give us enough time to get back to Mr. Singer in a timely fashion, I would think.
We can certainly do that. So, you would like us to basically bring back sort of the information we talked about tonight, but a little bit more formal and put it on your agenda next Monday evening, and do not submit anything to Mr. Singer until after next Monday evening. Is that correct? Just want to be sure I'm clear.
I think that would satisfy Mr. Dayhoff. Is that agreeable to everybody else?
I think I'd be okay if she went ahead and had Mr. Singer review it because, I mean, if he has problems with it, that'll just prolong the process. I just want to have a chance to look at what it is that we're sending out to the public before the public calls to my attention something that the city's released.
Well, once we've got a document in play, it's hard to sort of keep it under wraps, you know, once we send something to Mr. Singer. So, I think that we've either got to, you know, distribute it and send it to him later or just go ahead and send it to him, and that's the way.
What do you think? I mean, the point is, is that I want to hear from it from Westminster Government and not from Facebook.
And that's certainly not a problem because, as I said, if you all are comfortable, we can certainly submit it to Mr. Singer, get his feedback. As I indicated, there's going to be at least a minimum of a day between when we hear back from Mr. Singer and when the street department can actually be making signs. But we can certainly hold up to next Monday night, if you all prefer, to have Mr. Singer's comments brought back to you in public, and then you can basically decide whether you wish to move forward with that plan or not.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Maybe a compromise would be just simply we get an emailed copy of it when it's sent. That way, we're aware of what's said. And then if maybe we could get an emailed copy of the feedback, and that, I think that would be, for me, that would be satisfactory. I don't think we need to make it overly complicated. And then I would suspect that if one of us has major issues with something that's in there, which I don't think is going to be the case, we can voice that through email and then put it on the agenda if we have to discuss it. Otherwise, more informative than anything else. Would that work?
I agree.
It works for me. I think that the issue is that if Mr. Singer's willing to allow something, I think we're going to have a hard time saying it's not allowed. And so, you know, and, you know, again, I think that, you know, we put those who are charged with enforcing it in a difficult position, if others can do and some can't. So, I think that's a good way to go forward. So, we'll do it that way, as Mr. Cavaci suggested. If that's agreeable to everybody.
Sounds good.
That's good. I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Matthews?
I was just going to give Chief Ledwell an opportunity if he would like to offer some comments. Certainly, what we proposed tonight would not have been brought forward without consulting with him because the burden of enforcement is certainly falling on his staff. Also, I wanted to give the chief an opportunity to share any other information about the pandemic response since the police department's so wired into what's happening with the county.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, I'll just offer a couple of real quick things. We're already doing regular checks of all the parks. I think probably the largest potential to have social distancing and gathering violations would probably be at a basketball court. I think probably as the weather gets a little nicer, we'll probably see more people than supposed to be at the skate park also. We have no problem with getting people to be compliant. I think if it becomes too much of an issue or we have too big of a pushback, then we can always go back to restricting it. But I was kind of surprised when I read the DNR report, they're also recommending opening the playgrounds, which I think are probably at the highest risk for a problem and not doing the basketball courts. So, I know that people are anxious to get exercise. I think it's probably impossible to play an organized game without violating social distancing, but as Councilman Cavaci said, I think you could practice within it. I would recommend having signage that says 10 people or less allowed at a time and must maintain six-foot social distancing. But as far as our enforcement or checks and ensuring compliance, that's one thing that we're already doing and are able to do at this point.
All right. Thank you, Chief Ledwell. Ms. Matthews, if that wraps up the pandemic update, we will move on to...
Yes? Yes. That concludes staff's report. So, thank you very much for your time and your feedback.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports from standing committees. Mr. Dayhoff, anything new from the Arts Council that you wanted to share?
The Arts Council continues to brainstorm and come up with creative and innovative ideas. I mean, they are artists to deal with the COVID-19 crisis. I think the Peep Show, the virtual Peep Show went pretty well, and I think they're coming up with a number of other interesting, innovative, creative ways to deal with the COVID-19 crisis. I think we should all consult their website. Their website is done extremely well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Economic and community development, Mr. Yingling?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance committee, of course, we're going to be discussing the budget in a little bit, so I will defer any reports until that time. Personnel committee, Ms. Gilbert?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Cavaci?
Generally, just been pretty quiet. More than anything, I know I probably speak for all of us, we just would like to express our gratitude to both our police and fire that are out there doing, you know, their job as if nothing has changed because they don't have that choice. So, I think, again, for all of us, just thank you very much, chief, and to everyone within your department, and then also our firefighters. That's it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Public works, Mr. Yingling?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
Um, nothing to report. I think I had my say about the, about opening up the, the playgrounds. And I, I like that. I just want to know what's going on before it's released to the public.
I understand. And I think that, you know, that makes a lot of sense. I agree with that. Just as I said, it's hard to forward it on and then, you know.
Well, I'm not going to disagree with Mr. Singer, trust me.
I understand.
Ed has himself their number.
That's it. Council Comments and Discussion. This is an opportunity for the council members to comment on any items that don't usually fall under the committee report. We'll start down tonight. May we'll do off the medical order. We'll start with Mr. Cavaci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of two items. The first one echoes what the mayor talked about a little earlier regarding outdoor dining for our restaurants. I, I, I can't take credit for it either, Mr. Mayor. Actually, one of our restaurant owners contacted me about it. That, that, that's what got me to thinking about it, as much as I'd say that I had the foresight to realize how important it would be. But I, I, I do want to echo that I think it's important. I think that what's going to happen is not only is it in, in terms of a capacity, potential expansion, but I think that a, as we move out of this, people are going to be more inclined to want to eat outside and not confined within a building. I actually took a impromptu poll just here at folks in my office and around my neighborhood when I'd have an opportunity to speak to them. And virtually all of them said they'd be more inclined to be willing to sit outside at a restaurant versus inside. So I think that it, it's really important. And I would ask, I guess, basically that we ask staff to do what they can to facilitate outdoor dining as much as possible within our restaurants. Some of them have none, but they do have parking lots, for instance, where they may be able to take a couple of parking spaces away. They probably won't need quite as much parking anyway because to your point, Mr. Mayor, they're going to have limited, limited capacity with social distancing. So I, I, I would think that there's opportunities where they might be able to put some seating in an area we may not necessarily normally allow, of course, considering things you talked about in terms of making sure it's not violating ADA or safety issues and things like that. I, I think there's some fees associated with, with that as well, potentially when have, when folks have outdoor seating. I certainly hope we would waive those at least for this year to make sure that there's not any additional cost for them to do that. There may be other things we're not even thinking of that some of our restaurant owners, they're creative folks, and they may think of some things that they can do that we might be able to either assist with, or if nothing else, just step out of the way a little bit and let them do their thing. And, and then lastly, I, I, I would ask that we, you know, coordinate. The Health Department is, is county entity. We have nothing to do with that. It's, it's not within our wheelhouse, but I'm, I'm sure there's a level of communication that takes place sometimes between them. If we can do anything to help regarding that in terms of their influence on some of these things, I, I think we should. So I guess what I'm asking is to have your support as a body to ask our staff to do what they can to facilitate this as much as possible. So that's my first one. I, I could pause for a minute if anybody wants to feedback on that or, Mr. President, however you want to manage it, or I could just keep going.
Well, so the mayor suggested it, and, and of course you brought it up, and I don't, you know, I very much doubt that there's any real disagreement on it. I'd just like to say, I think that perhaps what we could do now, if everybody's in agreement, is, you know, ask Ms. Matthews and Mr. Depot and, and Chief Ledwell and anybody else who would be concerned to begin looking at whatever city ordinances or regulations or, or, you know, anything else that they, they might find that, you know, would interfere with our being able to allow restaurants to do that and begin to sort of making sure that we understand what those things are so that we can take whatever actions we need to. It's going to be some weeks before this will be allowed. And so I think it gives us some lead time to be able to figure this out ahead of time. And when, when the governor does allow people to begin doing this kind of dining again, you know, the city will be prepared to allow our restaurateurs to be able to take advantage of the opportunity. So if that's agreeable to everybody, I think we can give that direction to the staff. Does anybody have any additional comment on that or, or concern?
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I would also suggest, I agree with you 100%. I would also suggest though, as opposed, I would, the, the city should let the restaurants know that we're prepared to, you know, have this discussion as opposed to then have the restaurants start bringing plans to the city and the city saying, oh, wow, you know, that, you know, we had no idea that's what you were thinking. So I, I think the restaurants should be, I think, don't we have the Downtown Business Association? We need to say, hey, look, if you want to do this, you need to contact the city now, put together your plan so, so the city can say, okay, you know, here's what the issues might be as opposed to doing it the opposite way, which would just delay, you know, them being able to do it. So that's all I have. That's a suggestion.
Thank you. Certainly, I think we would welcome ideas that they might have on, on how they'd like to, to go about doing this. So unless anybody else has any concerns about this, I think Ms. Matthews, if you could, you know, have the staff start looking into that, I think we would appreciate it.
We'd be happy to do that. And in fact, Mr. Depot and I actually had an initial discussion concerning the matter this morning.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Mr. Cavaci, you have a second item.
I do. Okay. I'm going to do something I don't typically do, and I'm, I'm going to read as opposed to just going seat of the pants, which is pretty, pretty unlike me. So this is regarding the, the budget and in particular, the, the Recs and Parks budget and even more in particular, the Fitness Center. So the Westminster, the City of Westminster is committed to providing our community with healthy and enjoyable recreational and physical fitness opportunities through its extensive network of parks, playgrounds and other facilities. In acquiring buildings, outfitting, maintaining and operating these facilities, the city recognizes that it is providing an important public service. While the city does not expect to recover its capital investment in these facilities, it will strive to manage them in a manner that provides, provides affordable access to citizens while recovering a reasonable portion of the operating costs of these, when possible. So the Westminster Family Fitness Center. For many years, the city's operated a family fitness center at the historic old Westminster Armory on Longwell Avenue. The city took possession of the armory in the 1980s from the state of Maryland, purchasing it in the 90s, and it has used it for a variety of purposes since that time. In the 90s, as the Westminster Police Department moved into its current building, the city adapted the former space in the armory basement into a family fitness center. In the years since its establishment, the family fitness center has become a focus for many activities sponsored by, organized through the Parks and Recs Department. Recently, it has housed the department's staff workspace, fitness equipment, exercise room, a basketball court, classrooms and locker room facility. Unlike most private gyms and fitness centers, that operates on, that operate on a business model which upsells members to, to upsells memberships to members who rarely use the facility, the city serves, served a regular core group of users while keeping membership fees low to, to remain an attractive bargain for city residents in, in, in need of fitness options. As the fees remain stable, the cost of operating the facility has increased. For many years, the fitness centers operated at a deficit which has been made up out of the city's general fund. This amount has grown substantially over the past five years and no, and is no longer sustainable. It should also be noted that over half of the users of the facility are not taxpayers contributing to those funds that provide that subsidy. The above combined with other competing needs for the funds to use to subsidize that operation of facility has forced us to arrive at this point. So, actions so far, recent actions. Future of the Fitness Center activities within the larger armory has been in discussion for a number of years, especially in the last two years, as the mayor and council have considered each year's annual budget. Recently, the council's budget work session on May 4th of 2020, the mayor proposed and the council informally agreed to advise the staff to remove the funding of the Fitness Center from the fiscal year 2021 budget and to redirect those funds for, that would be saved by no longer funding this expected deficit set for the 2021 year of a little over $200,000 to the implementation of Phase 3 of our Comp and Class Plan, primarily to alleviate compression as well as main, or a small amount to be dedicated to marketing the city's fiber system. The mayor and council have received significant input from the community over the past week and a half. Many folks have expressed their opinion in a clear and concise, thoughtful manner. And for that, we thank you. Some may, maybe not so much. In all cases, it is clear to me and my colleagues that many people in our community have a significant attachment to the Fitness Center and a deep desire to see the Fitness Center continue to operate. So I believe we've got three options basically in front of us. We continue forward removing the funds from the Fitness Center and we instruct the staff to close the Fitness Center. We reverse course. Another option would be we reverse course and continue to operate the Fitness Center at a deficit and not fund the decompression or the marketing that we're talking about. And then I think the last option and the one I would recommend would be, and I think some of my colleagues probably feel similarly, is we remove the funds from the Recreation and Parks budget overall and the amount of which is projected to be the subsidy for the Fitness Center, which is approximately $209,000. And we redirect those funds from, to the Salary Decompression Plan and the Fiber Marketing. This does not remove all the funding, just the projected amount of the subsidy, and it removes it from the Parks and Recs budget. We then instruct staff that the need to make the necessary adjustments in both revenue generation as well as cost reduction in the department as a whole, to, to do that and account for the loss of funding in that budget. So we're basically telling the Recs and Parks Department, you no longer have $209,000 in your budget and you will need to manage how that plays out for the fiscal year 2021. That's it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. I know that the, the budget ordinance itself is scheduled for a little later in the agenda, but since you've raised the issue, perhaps it's a good opportunity to go ahead and have some, some discussion about this and you see where we want to go. We gave, we gave the staff some direction at the last meeting, as Mr. Cavaci noted, to reprogram the funds that would have subsidized the Fitness Center to, to other priorities of the city. But we did not discuss the other part of what Mr. Cavaci suggested, which is to create the expectation that the Recreation and Parks staff will make whatever necessary operating adjustments they have to, including, I imagine, changing the way they operate as well as fee increases to, to erase that, the deficit and therefore the need for a subsidy. Is there any discussion? Would you all like to discuss this now or wait until the budget comes up?
Mr. President.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
So I, I do think, you know, I, I think that if this was an idea that we discussed early on, I think, you know, I think it's a good idea in general. I do, I would like to take a minute to share some things. I, I think that there are a lot of misconceptions and a lot of misinformation out there. And I just want to take a minute to kind of clear some of those things up. The first one is that this was a decision that we made abruptly, you know, last second. And, and, you know, we do have a budget process and things do come to a head. And just so people understand the budget process, it starts in the Finance Committee. We deal with all the things that we really have no choice in. You know, there are things that just, the money's going to go to no matter what, things like payroll, office leases, things like that. And then there's always a handful of issues that we, we look at as a committee and, and then, and then we bring to the council and we say, okay, these are the things that we need to make decisions on. How do we make decisions on those? So the nature of the budget process is largely, things kind of come to a head closer to when the, the budget's going to be passed. And that's also when we have the most information on the, on the prior fiscal year. That's actually something that's kind of come up in, in conversation lately, too. I think maybe we should relook at the budget process. I think the Finance Committee itself may not be the place to have such a long drawn out budget discussion. Maybe we plan on having three, four work sessions as a council. Because look, these committee, these committee meetings, they're public, we advertise them publicly, no one ever shows up. So we've been talking about this. And, and one of the reasons I want to speak on this is I think I'm the only person that's been in all the committee discussions because for one, I'm on every committee. So I'm, I'm in the Parks and Rec Committee that's only been around for about a year. All the Finance Committee discussions during this council and then the previous one where we had a different Finance Committee, I've been in all of those. So I, I think, I think me proposing this is a, is a, you know, direct symptom of me being part of all those discussions and no one else has been. You know, two, two, like two years, two and a half years of us trying to figure out a way to lessen and lower the deficit. And it's, it's hard. You know, gym memberships are a, a price sensitive, you know, commodity. And I'm not going to use the word, I use, use the word commodity. It's probably not correct. It's not a commodity. Every gym's different. You know, everybody has their gym, love their gym for, for, for reasons that are, that are theirs. And then even, even if, you know, you kind of make your own reasons. You know, you, you, you meet people, there are things about your gym that you like. People get comfortable. It's uncomfortable to go to a new gym for a lot of people. A lot of people are, you know, they get, they get awkward or they feel insecure going to a new gym where they don't know a lot of people. So switching gyms isn't an easy thing. And for some, it's very hard. So this wasn't a decision that was made quickly or taken lightly. And it's not a decision that's really even happened yet. This is a proposal that I made and I want to explain some things as to why. Because we're under a lot of criticism and rightfully so, right? When we make a decision that's big, I welcome criticism, I welcome feedback, and that's how the process should, should happen. Now, I don't welcome some of the feedback. You know, I've been threatened, my, people have threatened my family, my businesses, and they've, they've said, they've tried to make claims of corruption, like I'm making some, some money off of closing this down, which are ridiculous. You know, they can continue to look into that. I'm not making any money closing a gym or proposing to close a gym where a lot of my friends go. And I've heard from all of them, too. They're still my friends, but they haven't been so friendly. So I, this, this has been, this has been a, you know, the easy thing for all of us. And I, I'd like to make this statement, and I think we all agree, the easy thing for us to do is to never have said anything about it all and just keep running a deficit and let it be someone else's problem. The hardest part of being, whether you're a mayor or a council member, is making a decision that's going to be unpopular, whether it's with a large group of people or smaller group of people that are just very passionate about it, right? That, maybe that's even tougher, right? And this is one of those things. We can talk about the 19,000 people that, that live in the city and pay city taxes subsidizing something that only 600 and some city taxpayers, you know, benefit from. But those, you know, out of those 600, there's 30, 50, maybe 100 of them that this is where they spend three to five, maybe seven days a week. And maybe this is their, this is their happier. This is where they see their friends. This is their, their moment they get every, every day or every week where they can decompress and, and relieve stress and anxiety, right? These are real things. So we all take them seriously. But I, I want to go over some things and, and kind of explain the thought process behind what I proposed to the council. And, and if we move forward with the plan that Councilman Cavaci proposed, all of these things should be kept in mind. I'm not speaking for or against your proposal. I don't have a vote in this. I made a proposal. This is up to the council. I certainly am going to own my proposal. I'm saying it's my proposal over and over again. So people get that. I'm not trying to push the responsibility off on anybody else. This is something I brought to the council. And if I hadn't, we probably never would have had the discussion. So I'll own that. But I want people to know why I did that. You know, this goes back a while ago. This goes back years ago in 2007, 2008, when we had a financial crisis in the United States. Municipal government got, lost funding from the, from the federal government, from the state government. And shortly after that, elected officials in the city, Mayor Utz, I believe it was, Council President WAC at the time and the rest of the council, had to make a very, very tough decision, probably the toughest decision elected officials ever have to make, and that's to raise taxes. And whenever I've heard people complain about that, I've taken up for them, which it's, it'd be easy not to. It'd be really easy to say, yeah, they shouldn't have ever raised taxes. But they needed to do it because we lost funding. Without that tax raise, roads wouldn't have been fixed. There are basic services that would not have been provided by the city. What I think happened, you know, then is we, we didn't, we didn't make up for some of the stuff that we would have been funding between the, you know, the recession starting in '07, '08 and, and the tax raise. You know, there were staff that retired or left that was never rehired, departments shrunk. I, I believe even currently, our Police Department and our Planning Department are under the number of employees than before 2008, which, you know, and they're busier than ever. You know, police are not less busy now than they were in '07, '06 and are certainly, our Planning Department are not. But they made that tough decision and I'll, I'll continue to, to defend it. You know, shortly after that, it wasn't long after that, the mayor and council made a decision to move forward a large project in the city, and that's the fiber project. We've talked about it a lot tonight. We talked about it a lot tonight. I know people have been discussing it, and they've been bringing it up a lot when talking about the fitness center. They've been bringing up the fiber project, the pool, our city office building that we're renovating, the old BBT building. These are things that people keep bringing up. And, you know, it only takes a minute to address them, and I'm going to address all of them. But, you know, that was a $21 million project to build the fiber. And that's, you know, those aren't necessarily capital costs because there's a debt service that we're pulling out of the operating budget. And that's something that's been brought up a lot, whether it's in Facebook comments or in emails. And I want to, I want to make it clear. It's not a good or a bad thing. There are good and bad things that come along with any project of that size. It's expensive, right? So as consumers in the city, people that have fiber service are winners of this. You know, gigabit fiber is a great thing. I'm a customer of it. I have, I have a circuit at my house. I pay for a circuit at my house. I pay for a circuit at both my businesses, and I donate a circuit to the CoGarage, which is a coworking space in the city. And it allows, but when we're not on lockdown, it allows small businesses who want to start and don't have a place to go, to go and for a very small fee, that there's a group of people that run that. I don't, I'm not involved in that other than donation, but they get a, you know, a place to go work. And, you know, so consumers of this are winners. The taxpayers, we don't know yet. This is a long-term project. The idea is to help with economic development. It's to help with bringing businesses and improving the quality of life here in Westminster. For those of you that have five people in a house right now that are all streaming and playing games, you're enjoying, and you have Ting, you're enjoying it. But regardless of any of that, there is a cost to it. And the cost to it has changed over time, you know. And I've done everything I can to try to work with that. You know, it took me about a year of pushing for it. But one of the, you know, one of the decisions we made that ended up bumping the cost down from 21 million to what ended up being around 15 or 16 is the way that we were actually building it to people when they ordered it. And that, that did lower the cost a lot. And I eventually got some support for that, and we all pushed forward, and that's made a big difference. But it didn't make a big enough difference. You know, one thing that, that is a little, I don't want to say deceiving, it's not intentional, but we talk about a fiber fund subsidy of $200,000 a year right now. But that is being also subsidized by a loan that we're currently receiving from the state that, you know, takes it down considerably. It's not 200,000. It's only 200,000 because of the loan. I believe this year it's between 600 and 700. But that loan's going to run out in two years. And when that's, when that's done, that subsidy's estimated on being between 800,000 and 1 million a year. Now, there's nothing we can do to change that now, and there are just as many people arguing it's worth the investment as people that will argue that it's not. I'm not here to argue that it's worth it or not worth it. What I am here to talk about is what we're doing, the steps we're taking between now and then to handle that so that when that bomb is dropped on us, we have a way to handle it. And in order to handle things like that, we have to make smaller, because there's nowhere we're just going to clear up a million dollars in a budget or 800,000. There's no one place. So we have to do it intelligently. And whether that's, you know, partially through the fitness center, you know, by clearing out the 200 to 300,000 every year that it costs us, or maybe it's just a small change there that saves us 50,000, but we got to find the rest of the money somewhere else. I will continue to have conversations, like I have been, on both had increased fiber revenues to offset that deficit. And that's one of the reasons my proposal is partially, you know, part of it was to market the fiber project. There are two ways we can fight this. We can fight this by improving the fiber project and having it more successful, but also by mitigating those, those costs through other means. So no one, no one in this entire elected body wants to close anything down and stop providing any services. But there's a point in time where we have to realize there are costs to every service we provide. And I don't want to use, I'm going to slip and say it, but I don't want to use the money, the word "loss." Actually, I had a conversation with Councilman Cavaci earlier, and he made a point that I really like. And, you know, in my head, it means the same thing, but I don't like the way that sounds. I don't want to say we're losing money on this fitness center because it's not, everything that we do is an investment. And we're spending money on the fitness center. We're spending money on the fiber project because everything has some kind of return. It's up to us to weigh that return and other, other ways we can spend that money and figure out what the best way to spend our money or the taxpayers' money. It's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. And it's up to us to figure out how to spend that. I would like to say that the, I think we're very lucky. The fiber project has been managed extremely well by the staff and public works and financing throughout the city. They've done a very, very good job. When the budget was set out, we're under, under budget by millions of dollars. So when I, when I, when I bring up pros and cons to this, I want to be clear, the staff has managed it wonderfully. And Ting has done a great job. I have no criticism for Ting at all. They've done a great job with this, and they've been a great city partner. So I want to tip my hat to the, to the staff and to Ms. Jivanyoni and her company and the work they've done with this. But, you know, we've had, we've had public committee meetings about this for two years, over two years to improve the financial situation of the fitness center. We've asked Director Abby Gruber to come back with, with plans multiple times. And she has, and none of those plans were able to do much, you know, other than put like a small dent in the fitness center deficit. And the reason that is is because any other major plan she could come up with would get rid of services, services that members rely on. You know, how many people would still be arguing that the fitness center needs to stay open if they didn't have the childcare option available, right? So you can't cut so many services, raise prices, and still be viable. So we have to do it in a viable way. So when we have tasked Ms. Gruber to go and come up with these plans, and she's brought back plans that have not fully addressed the issue, there's no, there's no blame from me on, you know, to her. I think, you know, she's done her very best in trying to find solutions. And there certainly is no, no lack of work ethic or creativity on Ms. Gruber's side. I think we all, we've all seen how hard she works on everything and how creative she is in a lot of the problems that she solves. I think we've given her a very hard task in coming back with a solution for this. So compounding, you know, our current issues, there's the state mandated increase to minimum wage. And I believe the fitness center is one of, if not the only department that have staff that are paid under that amount. So in addition to fixing the current deficit, we're going to have a larger hit when that, when that takes place. So we're looking at not only a deficit that's run closer to 300,000 than the number we're really talking about, but it'll likely be much higher than that once that goes into place. So that's something we have to consider. And, you know, there was, there was a time where we brought this up at the council. I think a lot of people are saying that we haven't talked about this. There was a time this was brought up at a council meeting. And our council president at the time stated that the majority of the council is no longer interested in discussing actions regarding the fitness center. So we have brought this up. We have tried to work this problem out. And, you know, I brought this up again because we have a new council, a new council president. Everyone's worked really well together on a lot of things, and I thought it was a really good time to revisit things that weren't being talked about before. I'm glad we started this discussion, even though we've all taken plenty of heat for it because it's something that we have to discuss. We can't just run deficits across the board on multiple programs forever when things are getting tight. So, you know, whatever, whatever the council decides here, I'm going to support. If the council decides to allow the department to make that decision and, and the department wants to take steps to keep the fitness center open, I will work hard and do my very best to support them in every way in fixing that deficit. That's the council's decision, you know, to make that, make that movement. I'm only proposing a budget. I'm only proposing things in a budget. But I want people to know why I did it. It's not because, I'm a, I'm a fitness guy. I've competed in strength sports and strongman and powerlifting for well over a decade. And the last thing I thought I'd be doing when I ran for the position is talking about closing a fitness center. I, you know, when I'm training for competitions, I'm in the gym two, three hours a day, five days a week. You know, and my gym's my second home. And I know, you know, I get how people are feeling right now. But I wanted to address all those things. You know, I, I think, I think that it's just a serious discussion. And no matter what happens, you know, here tonight, I'll support it. I do think things we have to consider. If, if there is a decision to, to go forward the way that Councilman Cavaci has suggested, I think things we have to recognize are, this is going to be a different year. We can't look at this past year, and we can't look at the coming year because the COVID-19 situation is going to skew the numbers. It may look, may make them better, may make them worse. Revenue's going to be different, so are, so are costs. So whatever we do, we have to commit to at least two years in order to give it a fair go, if it's to keep it open. And again, we wouldn't be making that decision on Councilman Cavaci's plan. It would be the department that would make that decision. But we would have to give them at least two years to figure it out because we can't, we can't give them a task set up for failure because this is going to be an off year. If we do it, we have to give them the right opportunity to do it. And, you know, look, here's, here's the end of it. We have to make decisions that are going to affect not just ourselves and the current residents here, but future residents and future councils and future mayors. My fear is if we don't take actions on, on, on what seem like small issues now, in a few years and several years, however long it takes, there's going to be a mayor and council that's going to be sitting down, speaking to their constituents, and they're going to say, "We don't have a choice but to raise taxes." And they're going to be right. So anybody that's going to give them a bunch of pushback on it, I suggest they don't because they're going to be in a position where they probably don't have a choice. I think we have a choice right now, whether it's to address this or other areas of the budget. It's not, it's not to me or any one of us what areas of the budget we addressed it in, but we have to start addressing where we're bleeding money because at some point, it's going to be a problem. When that loan runs out and we have an additional 500, 600,000 a year added to the 200, 300, 400 subsidies that are going to be, we're subsidizing the fiber fund by 800,000 or a million dollars a year, there are going to be really, really tough choices to make. Maybe we find more grants or more loans, and maybe it pushes it off. Maybe we find loans and grants every single year, the entire time we're paying, you know, the debt service. That's a possibility is, I do think more funds are going to be tightened up by the Fed and the state and the county. We're going to be looking at tougher and tougher budgets. And if we don't address things one way or the other now, we're going to be in a world of hurt. And it's not going to be me, and it's probably not going to be most of you. It's going to be some other mayor and council and another group of residents that will largely be the same, but it will be slightly different, that are going to be dealing with it, and they're going to be paying for it. And, you know, I'll get off my soapbox now. This was a lot longer than I planned to talk. But I, I just, I think it's fair that I say all of the things that, you know, went into this proposal because, you know, it, it was never, it was never my intention to be proposing this in the first place. There are tough decisions that have to be made. Maybe, maybe this isn't one of them. That's up to you guys. But we're going to have to make tough decisions, and it's going to be up to us on which ones to make. Or we can push it down the road to some other mayor and council. But I don't think that's the responsible thing to do. I think that if we do this, it has to be done in a very careful, thought-out way, and we have to address these deficits seriously. Or, or, you know, it's going to result in, and that's just my prediction. Maybe I'm wrong about all of this. You know, I'm just, I'm just a small-town mayor that was elected three years ago. I'm just learning, I'm just learning how to do the job. So if you, if anyone has anything else to say, you know, or any questions for anything that I stated, feel free. But that's, that's, that's it for me, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who would like to be here, Mr. Yingling?
So what I'd first like to say is to all of the residents out there of the city and outside the city who wrote emails articulating their points, thank you so much for doing that. Clearly, you all have a very strong sense of community at that gym. And frankly, I've lived here my whole life. That was something that I was not aware of there. So I really appreciate you, you all reaching out to us. I'd also like to say that, you know, this was my first year on the finance committee, and everything that the mayor said just now, I 100% agree with. He made excellent points, and we want to make sure that, you know, those points were made and everybody watching now understood them. You may not agree with them. So I want to also thank Councilman Cavaci for bringing the kind of new perspective on the funding. I do agree with the mayor on those challenges, and I'm not sure how that will span out. But, you know, this is exactly what a work session is. We're doing it right now. I know there's been a ton of, in some people's emails, you know, they talked about transparency, and this was never discussed. No, this was discussed, you know, it was discussed in many committees. And then we're continuously discussing it. No decision has been made. So I just wanted to remind people that this is the process, and you're watching it right now. So again, I want to thank everybody for taking a hard look at this. But I, I talked about this a lot with the mayor throughout the process, and his points are excellent, and I agree with them. So that's all, President.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Yingling. Ms. Gilbert, I think you were seeking recognition.
Um, yes. I'm going to, yeah. I don't know if it's actually my turn per se, per se, in the, in the whole council comments. I'm going to, before I go into the big elephant in the city of the family center, I just wanted to...
Well, Ms. Gilbert, we're talking about the family center issue right now. We hadn't gotten around to everybody else's comments.
Okay, then I'll just, I'll just do the family center. And I, like Tony, kind of wrote something, so I'm going to read it. That way I don't either forget something or I pretty much stay on track. So I, too, had taken a lot of time and read the letters, the emails, the, some of the Facebook posts. I'm sure I've missed lots of comments, but I did catch quite a few. The petition and the drive to comment on the facility has really been enlightening and heartwarming. There were, there was a point in time in my own life that my work family, not necessarily my, my gym family, but my work family became a huge support for me when I needed someone outside of my immediate family to lift me up and push me. So I totally understand and empathize with what all of the community has, has brought forward. The overall theme of all the letters was more than a gym. It was a lifesaver to people, something to look forward to. It is a place where amazing souls that lift each other up come to and a place that fosters health, well-being, and a sense of community. Many of those points were directly quoted from, from some of the letters. So I began to think about the proposal that the mayor did comment on, on our last meeting, but also investigate and brainstorm some other alternatives because in my mind, nothing's black and white. And it's, and it's our job to not only ask questions, but to serve the community. So we never received a negative letter regarding the feelings people received, got from the center. The center itself is a positive entity in our community. The center itself is a positive entity in our community. The problem is, is that it is a financial loss and has been for many years. The budget presentation and the only numbers that I have, that I have so far seen tell me that there's been a constant loss since 2014. My guess is it was probably even occurring prior to that. A total of over a million and a half dollars. So I understand that not all government-run programs will and are expected to run a profit, but to me, a red flag has been raised, which is why the mayor also has brought this up to a degree that the continued loss with no intervention and discussion of our, of other alternatives has been made. So I just find that, even back to November 7th, the Parks and Recs Committee, we did meet and we did kind of discuss it, and we came up, Ms. Gruber did come up with a solution or at least maybe a part of a solution by raising some fees, but so far, we really haven't seen that happen. So now we're here in May 2020, seriously looking at the potential to close something and reuse the revenues and in alternate ways, areas in the budget. It is because of this that I believe maybe a small internal audit should be done to determine what folks are actually paying. Maybe something in the light of looking at the fees. Some people get their, their gym membership free, others reduce memberships and at least try to equal that out. In government, many times compromises, there should be probably a compromise, a compromise that can be discussed. I propose, very much similarly to, to Councilman Cavaci, that we continue to remove the 200,000 that the mayor has proposed and reallocate that money to the fiber project and to the comp and class. However, due to the compelling responses, I do not feel that this year, the family fitness centers should totally close. I would like to see Ms. Gruber take the balance in her budget and allow her to redesign or reconfigure her budget to allow the fitness center to continue. I also would like to see that we use the time that the gym is currently closed to obviously move forward on that redesign of the fitness center. I don't, would not like to see another empty building. I do want, I really don't want to see folks without somewhere that does foster their health and well-being for themselves or their families and a place that seems to be a key, a key piece in our city that allows people the chance to get up in the morning and feel good about themselves. We as a council should allow our staff the opportunity to take the wonderful asset and redesign it, use it, and see it flourish in a different way to possibly the point where it becomes maybe a financial profit. There are so many other different avenues and allow that Parks and, allow Ms. Gruber and her, her team to think of other ways to use that space. We could rent the space to instructors. It could remain a family fitness center. For that matter, all the grants that are coming in to us, they could form their own nonprofit fitness group and use the space in the armory. That's just kind of thinking outside of the box. I think of doing that would allow the ability to not have a constant loss in the gym regarding the finances, but also, and also continue to provide our city with an opportunity to have healthy exercise choices. It may take some work or conversation, but right now, there are no gyms anywhere and we should really use the opportunity to create a plan. That's kind of my, my thought at the moment on the gym.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Dayhoff, you've been patient.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to say something?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. And we've been patient about the, the Armory and the Family Center for many, many years. My father-in-law helped obtain the building in 1980, and recreation and recreation opportunities in the city of Westminster have always been extremely important to, to me and my family. I think going forward, I think that, I appreciated the mayor's remarks that now that it seems that we're going to go in this direction, and I really, really want us to go in the Cavaci Plan direction, that we need to fully support the rec staff in this, in this direction. I think that we're going to, I'm going to speak with my colleague, Councilwoman Gilbert, and I think we'll look at forming a committee and put some, some, put some folks, put some folks that are members of the Family Center on that committee. I feel very confident, I've reviewed many of the plans that have come forward, and I believe that Ms. Gruber has, and Ms. Mullendor have a really good plan that I really do think that'll work. I think we just need to roll up our sleeves and, and get to work. I had originally thought that maybe give us a year, we can do it. I'll take the mayor up on his offer of two years. I really, really think that we can do this. I would also, Mr. President, if you could help me out with this, I have gone over the budget really carefully, as you know I do. And I would like to see a copy of the Family Center's P and L because I, I just, I looked over revenue, 100.444103, and I've looked at expenditures, 100.70, .102, .4113, and I'm just having a hard time getting the numbers to work. So I would, I would love to see a P and L to see what actually goes into formulating that the rec center has a deficit to overcome. And I've done budgets, as you're aware, Mr. President. I'd really like to reconfigure the budget process a little bit. It's been a little unique this year, and, and I would really like, if we have hot-button topics in the future, I'd really like there to be ample notice to get feedback from our citizens because I find it extremely valuable. I think I've covered it. Thanks a bunch. I really appreciate it, everybody.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. So Mr. Cavaci has suggested a plan which seems to have met with general approval, which would be that, as I understand it, if I can just state it simply, is that the funds that the city had planned on using, you know, that would have been necessary to subsidize the deficit will be reprogrammed, as was discussed at the work session, and that instead the city staff, particularly Ms. Gruber, will be charged with, you know, coming up with an alternative for operating the fitness center, which would, you know, perhaps raise some additional revenue and change some operational procedures so that the subsidy would not be necessary. I think, as the mayor pointed out and as others have pointed out, I think it's fair to say there's going to be some months probably before the fitness center is able to open under the COVID-19 public health emergency. So there's, there's some time for the staff to take a look at this and figure out, you know, a path forward. But that seems to be the new guidance that, that the council's agreeing to. Is that, is that fair?
Mr. President.
Mr. Yingling.
I just wanted to be clear with the direction of staff, from my perspective, that it is the expectation that the fitness center will not run a deficit after a specified period of time.
I agree.
Right, and I think that we're, we're saying so, that we've got a fiscal year that is about, we're drawing to the close, the one fiscal year, and as I said, the gym may or may not reopen before the end of that fiscal year. So then we're about to enter fiscal year 2021, and I gather that if I correct in what the mayor was suggesting, that we probably need to wait until the end of fiscal year 2022 to see if we have been able to change the way the fitness center operates in order to meet the goal that we've talked about.
Mr. President, one more thing.
Mr. Yingling.
My understanding, and I would probably suggest that the Parks and Rec Committee be very involved in that process and then report back to the council on the progress of the fitness center's operations and how they're evolving.
All right, I think that's, that's fair. That sounds like it's Mr. Dayhoff's intention as the chair of the committee.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
He's going to roll up her sleeves and we're going to do it.
I, I would also...
Thank you.
I would also like to, to add to, to Mr. Yingling that, that I would probably, as Parks and Rec, kind of work with Ms. Gruber and her team on this, that we get regular financial reports, not just on, down to the detail as to how things are going with the, with the center.
All right. Good to hear. Thank you. We'd always say, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think while we go down this road, I think that, you know, we'll have more frequent Parks and Rec Committee meetings with Councilman and former Mayor Dayhoff over here and, and Councilman Gilbert and Will, the three of us will, well, it'll be, it'll be Committee Chair Dayhoff will, will, in our, in our, you know, committee reports will express what we work out. And like I said, look, I want, I want there to be a fair chance if, if we're, if, if the department, look, this still hasn't been decided because the department has to figure out how to make it work. If they can't make it work without, you know, closing, then, then that, that's going to be their decision, but we're giving them that, that, that opportunity. I think, you know, like I said, I think if we're going to give it a chance, it has to be two years because one year, it's going to be an off year. So, you know, we have to be fair. We have to give them a full fiscal year where there's not a, an international pandemic going on. So if it's going to happen, it has to be done well. And look, that'll, that'll give more time, you know, and, and this doesn't have to be, nothing has to be profitable, you know, it's not the government's place to turn a profit, right? It doesn't have to be down to zero. The, the goal is always to be revenue neutral. But I think that if, if the center, you know, having a 300 or close to $300,000 operating deficit every year is the issue, if it was $50,000 of a deficit, we wouldn't be having this conversation. This doesn't have to be absolutely revenue neutral. It doesn't have to be profitable. It just has to be a reasonable investment, you know? So, so I think that, you know, moving forward, I don't know if we have definite, you know, solid expectations. One thing I would like to mention though, this is going to be difficult if, if this is something that happens, and a lot of people are using a number of 1,600 members, which is true. But I believe the number of memberships is below 1,000, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I leave it, I believe it's in the 700 and some range. We have about, in the 700-ish range, number of memberships. So when it comes to raising pricing, it's not over 1,600 memberships. It's over 700 and some memberships. So it will be a significant price raise. There, there's no doubt. And when that happens, look, the people that have sent in letters and emails, they're sticking around. If you double, triple their prices, it seems like they're passionate enough to stay no matter what. It's the other, it's the other, you know, it's the, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 500 members that don't see the value and go to a $10 a month gym, and we're going to have to raise prices in a way that would make up for that loss. You, you can't raise prices without losing membership. Maybe it's a few people, maybe it's a few hundred. We won't know until we do it. I don't think anyone knows that number, how that works, but, um, you know, I'm, the Parks and Rec Committee will work hard to, if it is the department's decision to, to work with the budget and keep this open around other things, and I don't know what else, what else gets cut because of that. We got to be cognizant of that as well. Other programs may, may feel, feel it, but we'll, we'll work on it and we'll report back every time we have a meeting as to the progress of, of what's going on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've, you know, as I, as I chair the meeting, I don't often get a chance to comment on, on some of these things. I just wanted to, to say that as I've looked at this issue, you know, now and over the last few years, I've always considered the fitness center an important public service, and I was glad to subsidize it over the years. I think that the challenges come for us that we're at a point where we're subsidizing a facility that has a large number of non-city residents as the majority users of it. And so I think that, you know, it becomes a problem in, in allocating scarce resources to continue to subsidizing something that, subsidizing it in a way that's sustainable. And I think that's the challenge for us here. And I still support, you know, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to keep the fitness center open, and I still support, you know, significant public funding for our Department of Recreation and Parks. And I want to point out that, you know, we're still subsidizing because they don't bring in any money, parks and, you know, playgrounds and all kinds of other recreational activities in the city. We still call upon Ms. Gruber to, to lead a variety of other activities. So the city continues to make a tremendous investment in its recreational and park system here, and the challenge is just that we've got to figure out how we can afford to manage this one piece of it in a way that's sustainable going forward. So I very much hope that we're going to be able to find a way to do that here. And I think that, you know, if we can do it, I think that there's a committed core of people who see, who certainly love the fitness center and, and, you know, seem as if they are energized to try and do this. So I'm very hopeful that Ms. Gruber and Ms. Mullendor and the rest of the fitness center staff are going to be able to, to do this, and I'm looking forward to supporting them in any way we can on this. Glad that we've got a path forward. I'm glad Mr. Cavaci was able to, to pull this together, and, you know, I hope, think that we can, you know, inform the rest of the budget discussion with that path. Now, does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add at this point, or do you think, or can we move on to the rest of the agenda? Mr. Dayhoff?
Yes, and may I get your support? I really need to take a good look at that P and L. I looked at the P and Ls many years ago when I was mayor, and it was budget neutral, so we want to do that again.
I'm totally happy for you to see anything you, you need to look at, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you very much, and we'll, and, well, we'll have a meeting as soon as possible and, and get this, get this, thank you very, very much. I really, really appreciate everybody's help, and I really, I love the letters. I mean, I, I love to write, so it was all good. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have, if we, we could run down the rest of the council comments, if anybody still has anything they'd like to add on any other subjects. We did, Mr. Cavaci, we would go alphabetically to Mr. Dayhoff. Anything else you'd care to add?
Well, I was very sad about retired Lieutenant Doug Johnson. We did have some prayer services over at the police department and, and had a moment of sharing and reconciliation with it. It's tough stuff. I can't agree enough with the, with helping the restaurants out. I definitely want to follow Mr. Cavaci's lead on that. Interestingly enough, I would love to give you a long history on the sidewalk permit, but it did come about many years ago when on the weekends, the sidewalks were so crowded that you had to walk out in the street. So we had to do something about permitting tables and, and things like that on the, on the sidewalks. But I really, I really think that we ought to do whatever it is that we can for the restaurants, and I love the idea of a parade for the seniors. Whatever we can do for them, I think that that would, I think that that would be appropriate. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciate this.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Gilbert, anything else you'd like to add tonight?
Um, yeah, just two small things. I, I thought it was a great idea that the mayor brought up about our graduates. I'm not sure we're going to be seeing parades this summer, so I thought about maybe our graduate names on flags. I, we can also do them with McDaniel and have McDaniel for a short amount of time, and then maybe Westminster High and Winters Mill and all of our local Westminster schools. And since there's so many of them, put several names on a particular flag and have them all up and down our main street. And then regarding the sidewalk dining, or to see that we, we probably waive the fee of whatever those fees are to make that as helpful to our businesses as possible because I know some of them probably are really, really have finding it challenging to stay open as it is, and even to make it into the summer to open up will be a challenge. So anything we as the city can do to help them get their businesses back, I think they will be so much appreciative of it. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Yingling?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Yingling. We'll move on now to ordinance and resolutions. The first is, the first item is adoption of ordinance number 922, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster Maryland approving and adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021. Ms. Palmer? If you're still with us.
Yes, sir. As you know, you introduced the ordinance budget on April 27th and have since then had two public hearings and two budget workshops. I believe it is still up for discussion this evening.
Indeed it is. So you all, you all received a copy, well, of the budget ordinance, and everybody has now also received a copy of the line item budget, which goes into considerable detail. It is 9:30 right now. We've been meeting for two and a half hours. We have a special meeting scheduled next week for the purpose of adopting the budget in case we're not able to do that tonight. We also have some other items on the agenda tonight. So I just, I just point those things out to see what the council's pleasure is in terms of how you'd like to move forward at this point.
Mr. President, I would...
You're good.
Um, I would propose that we delay the approving and the adopting of the budget till the proposed meeting next Monday. I just received my line item budget today, and to be honest, I worked all day and I have only looked at maybe a few pages of it. So I would kind of appreciate the, to take the week and look at it in a thorough, more thorough fashion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Anybody else?
I would support that as well, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Yingling. I thought that would be the sentiment, and that's why we went ahead and scheduled the special meeting for next week. So without objection, we will defer further consideration of this item until the special meeting on May 18th, and it is so ordered. Move on now to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of resolution number 20-03, approving and adopting plan documents for the city's cafeteria benefits plan, including its flexible spending account. Ms. Childs?
Good evening. Thank you. Resolution number 20-03 would increase the amount of the maximum health FSA contribution that is eligible, an eligible employee could make. In calendar year 2020, the Internal Revenue Service raised the contribution limit to $2,750. The city's current maximum contribution is $2,700. Because of the IRS's action, the city's FSA plan is eligible to make the enhancement in the new plan year effective July 1, 2020. The revised benefit plan description and adoption agreement and summary of the city of Westminster's cafeteria benefit plan reflects the increase from $2,700 to $2,750. The cafeteria benefit plan document does not require revision. All of these documents are attached to resolution number 20-03 as Exhibit A. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council adopt resolution number 20-03, increasing the city's maximum health FSA contribution. the city's maximum health FSA contribution from $2,700 to $2,750. Resolution number 20-03, including the associated documents in Exhibit A, have been attached.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Childs. So this is just for, this is for approval. This is a resolution. I have a motion to approve resolution number 20-03.
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
There's a motion by Mr. Cavaci to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And I hear a second from Mr. Yingling, I believe. Any discussion on the resolution? All right, hearing none, we will move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 20-03?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The next item is adoption of the emergency ordinance number 923, an ordinance deferring the effective date of the city's plastic bag distribution restrictions. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Pecoraro. As you all know, on May 13 of last year, the common council adopted ordinance number 911, which would impose certain restrictions on the distribution at business establishments of single-use plastic bags. As currently drafted, ordinance number 911 is scheduled to take effect on July 1, 2020. At prior meetings of the mayor and common council, a number of you have cited the ongoing challenges for our business community in the light of the COVID-19 pandemic. To alleviate any unnecessary burden, the mayor and common council have discussed pushing the effective date of ordinance 911. Emergency ordinance number 923 would defer the effective date of the city's plastic bag distribution restrictions until January 1, 2021. And staff recommend that you consider adoption of emergency ordinance 923.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. I have a motion for adoption of emergency ordinance number 923.
Motion moved.
There's a motion by Mr. DeHaas. Is there a second?
I second it.
And there's been a second by Ms. Gilbert. Would anybody like to be heard on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
I know, you know, I came to you with this request probably a month ago now, and I'm glad we're doing it. I did get a letter or an email from someone, one of the, I don't know, the Assistant General Manager, I believe is the title, a giant, asking about this. I do think we need to do something to get the word out. So if, you know, if anybody knows any management in any of these places, let them know right away, because they're taking steps to change this, especially during this. Grocery stores are the ones that either get hit hardest by this ordinance. And I think that, you know, I think they're getting hit really hard right now with other things, too. So whatever we can do to communicate this well, I do, the only concern I have is I think six months may be, I think in six months, we're going to be extending it again for another six months. I think we should do it for a year. If everyone wants to do six months, that's fine. We just have to revisit it again. I think that there are going to be things that we're, that are still going to be in place in six months. Hopefully, not too many restrictions, but I think, you know, not taking your bags in the grocery store will probably be something that's still recommended in six months. But, you know, that's something for you guys to discuss. I'll, I'll sign off on whatever you guys decide.
Mr. President?
All right. Ms. Gilbert?
I tend to agree with the mayor. I think, I think six months would be nice, but I'm foreseeing a year's worth of, of some COVID practices to remain.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Yeah, you know, I hadn't, I was ready to say, well, we can revisit it in six months. But, you know, the mayor makes a good point. I hadn't thought about the fact that, you know, people may not actually be able to bring these bags in for quite some time because they could be, they could potentially carry something on them. So, yeah, we probably ought to just go ahead and push it one year, make it effective July 1 of 2021, and just be done with it. I think that we don't want to have some of these folks kind of herky-jerky, having to get supplies in, and maybe they don't need them, maybe they do. Let's just, let's just push it. I think it makes sense.
All right. I would, I would just like, I would just say, I personally think six months is only enough time to, to get people, in addition to adapt. There's no real evidence that I've seen that taking grocery bags, just reusable bags into a store creates any kind of an issue. I know that some people are concerned about it, but I haven't seen, you know, any, anything in the literature or any article saying that it really is a problem. I think we're giving grocery stores and other merchants a chance of another six months to get their act together, to move towards biodegradable plastic bags, which are certainly available on the market. I've seen some, some merchants in Westminster are already using them. I've purchased food and other things at some places where the bags are already marked as biodegradable and can be used that way. So my personal view is six months is, is long enough to get people in the midst of the public health emergency to continue to make their adjustments. But that's, that's just my personal view. And of course, I was the author of the ordinance in the first place. So I managed to, to see the relief to the environment from more of these bags being put out there. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President?
Mr. DeHaas?
And a lot of the local restaurants have already gone to paper bags, and they've got marketing on it, and I think it's done extremely well. And as a lot of folks are aware, I was chair of the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board throughout the 90s. I'd like to stick with six months. We can certainly just take another look at it in six months. So what's the motion at this point in time? You want to go with the motion of six months, or you want to change it for a year? I mean, absolutely. I want to be deferential to my colleagues, but...
Mr. President?
The motion, the motion is on adoption of the resolution as, as introduced, which is six months.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yingling?
I tend to agree with Mr. Cavaci and the mayor about extending it a year for the reasons already stated.
Again, the motion is on, you know, the motion on the floor is approval of the resolution as introduced. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing no further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution as introduced signify by saying aye.
Aye.
President Pecoraro, I would note this is an ordinance, so it will require two votes.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Are you going to enter? I thought it was emergency legislation.
It is emergency. It is an emergency ordinance, but the ordinance has to be introduced first, and after that motion, then you can move immediately to adoption.
Well, actually, what we usually do in that case is, we usually, Ms. Levin, are you still on? Yes, she's still there. Isn't this where we usually move to, you know, suspend the rules that interfere with the immediate introduction and adoption?
That's how we used to do it.
I believe that is how you've been doing it. In my view, the, if you adopt the ordinance as presented, which contains a statement of emergency and the rules already allow you, you're not only waiving the rules, you're, you're invoking the permission that is in the rules to declare an ordinance an emergency and dispense the waiting period between introduction and adoption.
I'm sorry, that was, to me, that was pretty garbled. I didn't really understand what Ms. Levin said. Did anybody else get that?
No.
Hold on. I'm going to run on my video. I'm going to help. Okay, so in your rules of procedure, there is a provision for adopting an ordinance as an emergency, which allows you to waive the waiting period. So you're not so much suspending the rules of procedure as invoking the provision relating to an emergency.
So, Mr. President?
All right. Mr. Cavaci?
Yeah, if I, I think what we're, what we're saying is, is that the invoking it allows us to do both votes tonight, but we still need two votes. Is that correct, Ms. Levin? Instead of having to have the time in between? Is that what you're saying?
You should move, think this, and then we'll sit down.
All right, hold on, just, I apologize for not being clear for this. Well, the rules just...
Hold on one second. Let me turn the mic.
All right, so, so Ms. Levin, what, what, because I don't, I'm looking at the rules, and I don't see what you're saying here. It just says that we can, we can take emergency measures immediately on the passage. I think if we, you know, the rules usually require introduction and then adoption at separate meetings. So what is it you are saying we need to do?
Hold on one second. I'm opening.
And I would think that we could, that I could enter in a motion to suspend the rules that interfere with the immediate introduction and adoption, and we could vote on that. And the fact that we have called it an emergency ordinance means that it can become effective immediately. Isn't that the case?
One second. Does it go back up to section 39? It says ordinances except emergency measures shall not be passed until they have been replaced. So this is an emergency ordinance, so it doesn't have to be replaced.
Right, but we can dispense with it.
You don't have to have a separate interaction and adoption.
All right, so we can, so again, a motion to suspend the rules to allow the immediate introduction and adoption is an order, correct?
I'm sorry. They only can read them.
The way we've done it in the past?
I don't know.
Said the way we've done it in the past is to have a motion to suspend the rules to allow the immediate introduction and adoption of an ordinance?
Yes.
And so we should, so that would be an order, correct?
You have done that in the past, and it is a perfectly appropriate procedure. What I'm saying is technically, I don't think you need to suspend the rules because the rules provide your remedy in them.
Okay. So...
Mr. President?
All right, so then we don't need it. We could just vote on this?
I think...
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. We have a motion on the floor, and we were, we were in the midst of a vote, which I will resume. All those in favor of adopting the emergency ordinance as introduced signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
All right, then the motion, the, then the ordinance fails, and we will move on to the next order of business.
Mr. President?
President, can we amend?
Can we just amend it? Let's just amend it.
No, you just defeated it.
No, we can, we can, we can, we can make a, we can make another, we can make a motion to do it a year.
But you don't have an ordinance.
I believe they tried to amend it. You said we had to vote, or they had to vote on that exact verbiage.
No. I kept, I kept waiting for someone to make a motion, and nobody did.
Well, I thought we, I...
Nobody cleared up, was getting clear about it. I don't think that's fair. I think nobody was clear on exactly what the process was, and I have known to make a motion to amend it, I would have done so.
Yeah, I thought it, I thought we had to vote on the first one and then amend it. So I apologize. I didn't quite understand that.
I have weighed out.
Can, can we go back and do it again?
Uh...
Can we have a do-over?
Well... Who voted?
I voted for it.
Mr. DeHaas voted with the prevailing side, so he can move to reconsider.
I move to reconsider. I have weighed out.
All right, there's been a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed say nay? Chair votes nay? But the motion is adopted. We're back under, we're now, we're back under consideration of emergency ordinance number 923.
I, so can I make a motion?
Who would like to be recognized?
Mr. President?
Mr. Yingling?
So long as this is the appropriate time and procedure to make a motion to amend said ordinance, I would like to make a motion to amend it, to change it from a six-month to a 12-month duration, if that is what I'm supposed to be doing procedurally.
You may make a motion, yes. So Mr. Yingling has made a motion to strike, to change the term from six months to one year. Is there a second?
I second it.
The second from Ms. Gilbert. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, move on to a vote. Who was in favor of Mr. Yingling's motion to amend by striking six months and changing it to one year signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. The emergency ordinance is amended. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Mine is more a comment than a discussion. This should be a lesson to all of us that we, we should know our rules and procedures at least close to as well as the president does, because quite frankly, he could have hammered us on that, and, and he did not want that to pay. He did not want to extend it, and he could have forced that issue. And I'm grateful that you allowed us the latitude to go back and do it, because the reality is, you could have at least made us wait another week or two. So thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Cavaci.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Iron Hammer.
Any further discussion? Can we now move on to a vote on the ordinance? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? Opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the ordinance is Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I see, I'm aware of no unfinished business for the council. Is there any new business? I'm aware of no new business to be presented to the council. Departmental reports, Ms. Matthews?
Yes, I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember DeHaas to give the report for the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. President, I'll do that at the next meeting. I wouldn't dare say another word.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaas. Ms. Matthews, would it continue?
Yes, our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Childs?
Logan, thank you, Ms. Matthews. I just wanted to say that we are still continuing to work as normal as possible, and tomorrow we will be putting our packets together for open enrollment, and we should be going out to all employees on Wednesday. And that's all I wanted to report tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Childs. Mr. Depow, our Director of Community Planning and Development?
Good evening. On Wednesday, March 4, the Historic District Commission approved a historic rehabilitation property tax credit. On Tuesday, May 5, the Border Zoning Appeals approved the special exception for a service station use. This is the Valvoline Station on Gorsuch Road and 140 intersection. And the Planning Commission here, Planning Commission will be holding a hearing on May 14 to view the site plan for West End Place Family Support Center, more commonly known as the Family and Child Services of... Support Center, more commonly known as the Family and Child Services of Central Maryland, and also discussing possible elections for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Our Director of Public Works, Mr. Glass?
My report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Chief Ledwell?
Yes, good evening again. Our call for service volume remains slightly below our average. We're continuing our site checks of the medical respite site and the food distribution sites. The emergency operation calls for the COVID-19 reduced to three times per week. The Drug Task Force has been very active during the last two weeks, conducting investigations and operations. We were able to schedule our annual firearms in-service training and qualifications following gatherings and social distancing guidelines. We're conducting virtual applicant interviews over Zoom for our current vacancies. And, we did provide notice to our vendor and to the Howard County Regional Automated Enforcement Center regarding the termination of our remaining red light camera. So, the camera will be operational until June the 2nd, and June the 3rd, it will be terminated. And, that's it.
Thank you, Chief. Our Assistant Recreation Director, Ms. Mollendorf?
Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody for their reconsideration on the red light camera. And, I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Palmer, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services?
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. I have nothing to add this evening.
Okay. And, last but certainly not least, our Director of Housing Services, Ms. Foundsy.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. I think that concludes the staff report for this evening. President Pecoraro?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Now is the time on the agenda when we would normally have citizens' comments, when we would invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other matters here in the city. We're still working on a real-time solution to allowing that to take place during these meetings, and we'll continue to host these virtual meetings until we can return to our regular meetings at City Hall. The mayor and council believe that it's important to preserve these important hallmarks of civil government throughout the emergency. Let everyone know that we received hundreds of comments on the budget, particularly on the fitness center issue. And, while we don't have time to read them all at this point, and I don't really know that there's any point to doing so, I want everyone to know that they were all included in the packets that were sent out to all council members. And, they've also been posted on the city's website in the packets, in the council information packet there. So, we appreciate everybody taking the time to, to weigh in on that issue, as we always do on other issues in the city. And, with that, we have no other items on the agenda, and the meeting is adjourned until next Monday night at 7:00 PM for the special meeting. Thank you all. Stay safe and stay healthy. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.